Good evening and welcome to the Standing Fall Town Meeting convened pursuant to Rockport's Code of Bylaws, Chapter 2, Section 3. On the dais, to my right are Town Clerk Melanie Waddell and Assistant Town Clerk Courtney Buchanan; to my left, Town Administrator Mitch Vera; Town Council Lauren Goldberg; and Town Council Deb...
Ecker.
Deborah Ecker. Sitting in convened session tonight are the Finance Committee; to my left, the Department of Public Works Commissioners, I know they're here somewhere. Thank you. Down here also to my left, the Government Bylaw Committee, as well as the Community Preservation Committee, the Select Board, and the Planning Board. Please stand, attend the nation's flag, and kindly recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business is the reading of the warrant. The Chair will entertain a motion to omit the verbatim reading of the 28 articles on the warrant. Moved and seconded, is there a second? All those in favor of omitting reading the 28 articles of the warrant, say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries, and it is unanimous. I'm going to ask you to stand again, if you would please do so, to attend to the invocation to be delivered by the Reverend Nathan Ives of St. Peter's San Pedro Episcopal Church in Salem, Massachusetts. Reverend Ives.
Good evening. Please join me in prayer. Loving God, we come before you this evening so thankful for the blessings of this town and state and region that surround us, and for the beauty and safety and uniqueness of this community. Give us strength and wisdom, O God, as we labor and deliberate together to always remember the weakest in our midst, to always respect and care for one another, and to think through and advocate for what is best for the whole community. But above all, dear Lord, help us to live up to the words, liberty and justice for all, in all that we do. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Ives. The next order of business is reading the return on the service of the warrant. I'll ask the Town Clerk to read the return of the service on the warrant.
I, Matthew P. Barney, Constable of the Town of Rockport, have on this date, August 8th, 2025, posted the Fall Town Meeting warrant for the Fall Town Meeting to be held Monday, September 8th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. at the Rockport High School, in the two post offices, the Town website, the Town Bulletin Board, and seventeen other public places throughout the town, including three in Precinct 1, three in Precinct 2, and three in Precinct 3. Signed, Matthew P. Barney, Constable of the Town of Rockport. Received August 15th, 2025, at 2:26 p.m. Signed, Melanie J. Waddell, Town Clerk.
Thank you, Ms. Waddell. Just some general announcements. The restrooms are out off of the lobby. There's no smoking. Please remember we're guests of the school department, and help us keep the building clean. And finally, please silence all cell phones, pagers, Apple Watchers, any other device that might disturb the meeting. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, as adapted to town meeting by the laws of the Commonwealth, Rockport's bylaws, and custom and practice. First principle, let us be civil to one another, let us listen to one another, and consider carefully our decisions. I'll briefly summarize our expected procedure and refer you to the guide for voters participating in town meeting, which is contained in your voters' booklets. All comments and remarks are addressed to the Chair and should relate to the immediate question before the meeting. Excuse me. Remarks should focus on the question before the meeting, its merit or lack of merit, not on personalities. The motion, not the person, is the subject of the discussion. The sponsor bringing a motion ordinarily has afforded ten minutes for remarks, and subsequent speakers have five minutes. I will warn you if you are approaching your limits so that you can focus your remarks and make your final points. Speakers cannot start back-and-forth questioning. However, if issues arise which call for clarification, I'll try to get focused, specific answers for you to avoid confusion. Straw poles, however many favor this or that, are not in order and should not be requested. Speakers won't usually be recognized more than twice to address a particular debatable issue. Preference will be given to voters who have not yet spoken, and I'd ask for everyone's assistance in honoring that principle. When discussion on a debatable motion is done, we will proceed to vote. Once we make that transition, further discussion is not in order. That happens when either the moderator senses the meeting is ready to vote, or a voter with the floor makes a motion to move the previous question or end debate. If I sense you're ready to vote, I'll say that, I'll give fair warning. Five points on any motion for the previous question. First, you must have the floor. Please don't shout it out. Second, once properly made, it is not itself a debatable motion. We will move immediately to voting on whether or not to close debate. Third, if you make this motion, that is all that you should say. Don't argue your view and then move the question. If you've got a pithy remark and you make it, you will likely sacrifice your ability to move the question. Fourth, such a motion requires a two-thirds vote. Fifth, and finally, with this in mind, I would ask any voter to consider, before moving to end discussion, whether there have been legitimate issues raised by your friends and neighbors which have not yet been clarified. I won't stop you from bringing the motion, but I do ask you to remain mindful of this before making it. That's the ringtone my daughter has, so that really flipped me right out when I heard that. If this motion is made and fails, however, it is then within my discretion, as the moderator, to determine when another motion to end debate may again be put before the meeting for a vote. My understanding is, we have two fine microphone runners, Emile and Evan, from the Town IT Department. Emile and Evan, if you can identify yourselves so people can see who you are, thank you. I have determined that the following articles are related, and this is a page, it's in the voters' booklet. F and G, H and I, and then a number of articles from the Government Bylaw Committee, J through T, a number of articles from the Planning Board, U through X, and then Y and Z relating to collective bargaining. And what I would first propose, as many of you know, the Fall Town Meeting is the opportunity for the, by tradition, for the Community Preservation Committee to put forth its projects for the next year. In addition, there are four articles before us tonight, F, G, H, and I, that relate to a comprehensive revamp of Rockport's bylaws and the zoning code. It is largely ministerial, there may be more to that when we get to the discussion, but as a complete revamping, it's actually quite a project that was undertaken, and in my letter, and I'm going to take a moment now to publicly thank the Town Clerk, the Town Administrator, the Government Bylaw Committee, and I'm sure I'm leaving people out, and the Town Clerk's office and the Administrator's office for all of the work put in this over quite a long time. So I want to thank them for that effort to tee it up to put before you, so thank you. So my proposal is, a logical progression would be to take up first the CPC articles, and then follow that by the comprehensive revamp, and then we can sink into some of the more substantive changes having to do with bylaws and zoning. So absent objection, that is what I would plan to do. Any objection to proceeding in that fashion? Hearing none, that's what we will do. So, Mr. Vera? Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing while we're here. Let's take a quick test of the clickers. Does everybody have a clicker? All right. Also, the visitors' section up to my left, if you're a voter and you're sitting up there, and for some reason we're doing a hand vote, I may not see you. I leave it to your discretion if you want to remain up there. The clickers will certainly work from up there, so that's not a problem, and I'll probably hear you. But if you're a registered voter up there, and we're doing a hand vote, I may not see you. Not that I'm necessarily planning that out. And in addition, if anybody's in the room who's not a registered voter, please help me out and make sure you go to the visitors' section so that we don't have any confusion. So the first thing I'm going to do is do a quick QA check on the clickers. I know most of you are probably familiar with this, but I'm going to put a question before you. What you want to do is, when we start voting, and you will hear me say the words "vote now, now, now," there will be a timer with 12 seconds on the clock. When that starts to run, that's when you can start voting with your clicker. You can vote once, you can vote 100 times during those 12 seconds, it won't matter, it'll only register once. What you want to look for is to see a light that is green, right? A green light. So, I apologize if I've used this one before, but for purposes of the test, we're going to take a vote on the number-one Thomas Wilson tonic beverage, either Birch Beer is 1 or A, or Cream Soda is 2 or B. There are no other, nominations are closed, so that's it. All right. So, all those finding Birch Beer to be the best will press 1 or A. All those finding Cream Soda to be best will be 2 or B. 12 seconds from when I say "vote now," vote now, 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 now. Look for the green light. You're a wise group. I completely agree with the results of that vote.
Moderator. We have a good vote.
It says, I got my last, 63.
All right.
So that's...
Mr. Moderator, Article C. CPC Chair Ruth George moves the town here and receive the report of the Community Preservation Committee. In the motion printed on page 53 of the voters' booklet, the Select Board and the Community Preservation Committee recommend this article.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to receive the annual report of the Community Preservation Committee. Ms. George.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruth George, and I am the Chair of the Rockport Community Preservation Committee. I'm presenting tonight, in accordance with the Town of Rockport bylaw, Chapter 2, Section 6D, this calls for recommendations to be made at town meeting. You will hear later about the applications that we are presenting to you, the voters, for approval in spending your CPC funds. First, I'd like to do a quick recap of CPC for the town. You, the voters, voted in CPC in our town 22 years ago. Our first town meeting that you voted in was in the spring of 2003, and that was for 101,000 for the row parcel for watershed up behind the school and the golf course. CPC is overseen by the Department of Revenue. It's made up of mandatory town board members, and we have four appointed moderators, appointees. It's a nine-member board. Currently on the committee are the Housing Authority Rep, Sue Terry Blake, the Conservation Commission, Dawn Epstein, the DPW Representative, Erin Battistelli, who is also the Vice Chair, the Planning Board, Peter Cutner, Historic Commission, Ken Kaiser, and the four moderator-appointed members, Mel Michaels, who's the Treasurer, Larry Neal, Jim Mugoni, and myself, Ruth George, the Chair. We are also assigned a liaison from the Select Board, and this year, right now, it's Paul Murphy, and we also have a liaison from the Finance Committee, and that's Carl Engel. We meet monthly via Zoom, the third Tuesday of the month, at 6:00 p.m. On CPC, funds can only be used when they fall into one of four categories: affordable housing, historic preservation, open space, and recreation. Back in 2002, Rockport voters were very wise and voted CPC at the maximum allowed percentage of 3%. It could have been as low as a half a percent. So far, Rockport has realized approximately, estimated for the 2026 monies we've spent or allocated in grants, $16,581,741 for the town. That's the annual revenues of matching funds from the state. Tonight, if approved, you'll add another additional $1,274,700 to the total we've been able to fund with CPC for this community. This year, leaving CPC with a remaining balance going forward to next year's cycle with an all-time low of only $209,515. We usually try to leave at least $500,000 in our kitty for the next year, but we've had some really great projects, and we wanted to use as much as we could and keep a little bit for next year. So this year, for the 2025-26 year, I want to talk about what we've done and why. In the fall, we held a yearly workshop to explain CPC to the application process to residents and town boards and committees, and encourage new and existing applications. Our application deadline is always the first Monday of February. That is when the work really begins, the committee reviewing initial applications and working with each group to see if their specific application meets the standard for their specific category, and going through revisions and coming back to present their articles or their applications several times before we get it just right for you, the voters. We started with a beginning balance with applications of $1,884,215. We received 10 applications that totaled over $2 million. We didn't have enough money to fund it all. We had one application which unfortunately did not meet its category specifics and could not be covered under CPC. This was for $10,000 for the rights-of-way to reproduce their trails and map booklet. We're hoping they will work together with other town areas that they will get that money, but we couldn't fund it under CPC this year. That left us with nine applications. It was clear that we needed to look at this year's applications very carefully and ask hard questions of each applicant. Can this be done in phases? Could we begin with a study for your project? Can it be put off for a year? Does your project have a tight deadline that must be done now? And is all of your project requests able to be covered by CPC? After discussing all of this with each applicant group at our meetings, we were pleased to see that four of the applicants did self-revisions of their application, getting our total down to $1,526. But even with this amount, we still would not have any reserve going into next year. So during this time, we looked at all the outstanding CPC projects that had unspent money. We request that all applicants always put a 10% contingency built into their cost estimate. Money given for each project has specifics that the money can be used for and spent on, and they're not allowed to add additional items to use up remaining monies. So looking at projects back as far as 2014 that still had monies available, we were able to close out and get returned to CPC an additional $142,900, going towards next year's beginning balance. So that made us feel a lot better. Additionally, we've gone from an initial match from the state way back in 2003, we got 101% match. We got lots of money then. Now, because there are so many communities that have signed up for CPC, the match for the state fiscal year '26 is going to be maybe only 17%. At our July meeting, we held a public hearing at which the applicants presented, then the committee finalized their applications to move forward to the town meeting and for what amounts. I'm happy to say that all nine have moved forward, and we have CPC, we and CPC are the stewards of your money and all the residents' money. Tonight, we have nine great applications, all that keep Rockport, the town we all love, moving forward, but honoring the past which we were built on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question before you is whether to receive the annual report of the Preservation Committee, which you just heard. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries, and it is unanimous. Onto Article D. And first motion.
Mr. Moderator, first motion. CPC Chair Ruth George moves Article D, first motion, as printed on page 54 of the voters' booklet. The Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend this article.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to transfer $79,000 from the CPC estimated annual revenues to the CPC Community Housing Reserve Account. All is set forth on page 54 of the booklet. Ms. George.
Each year, we have to take 10% and put it in each category of affordable housing, historic preservation, open space, and recreation, and this is that category. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, again, the question is on transfer $79,000 from estimated annual reserve to the Community Housing Reserve Account. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries, and it is unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, second motion. Article D. CPC Chair Ruth George moves the motion, the second motion, as printed on page 54 of the voters' booklet. Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend this article.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to transfer $79,000 from estimated annual revenues to the CPC Open Space Recreation Reserve Account. Again, is set forth on page 54 of the voters' booklet. Ms. George.
Nothing more, just the same as the other one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, let's move some blood, raise your hands. All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and it is unanimous.
Third motion. Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves third motion for Article D, as printed on page 54 of the voters' booklet. Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to transfer $79,000 from CPC estimated annual revenues to the Historic Preservation Reserve Account. Again, is set forth on page 54. Ms. George.
Same as before. It's the 10% we put in each pocket the beginning of the year.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries, and it is unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, Article E.
Yes, Article E, sorry.
First motion. CPC Chair Ruth George moves Article E, first motion, as printed on page 56 of the voters' booklet. The Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend this article.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to appropriate and transfer $200,000 from the CPC Undesignated Fund to be expended by the Thatcher and Strathsmith Island Committee relating to the Thatcher Island South Tower, as outlined on page 56 of your voters' booklet. Ms. George.
Thank you. So, South Tower, Phase 2, Thatcher Island, it's the second in five installments that they've requested, and we'll look at the other three in the next three years. This year, they're asking again for $200,000. This project is both, I mean, it's historic preservation, but it could be, you know, considered open space and recreation with all that's done out there and all the people that go out there for kayaking and walking and things. This is the second request in the million-dollar request of the Community Preservation Committee. The twin lighthouses were built in 1861. The iron rails and their stanchion anchors on the granite parapets have rustjacking, a process in which the rusting iron expands and cracks the granite blocks into which each stanchion anchor is inserted. This has weakened the outside parapet walkways on both decks. Because the parapet support the upper portion of the tower, their continued disintegration could result in a catastrophic loss of the light, the lantern room, and the galley deck below. The lighthouse contractor, ICC Commonwealth, has estimated this will be a $2 million project. This project will probably require the entire top to be taken off by helicopter, sat down on the island while they work on it, and then put back up. It's a major renovation project or restoration. This will only be needed for the South Tower, as the North Tower is owned by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, which is committed to raising the funds and doing their repairs in the next few years. It has been done, this also has been done with the Town of Situate several years ago, and they bonded, I believe, and used all of the $2 million right up front to get their top of their lighthouse done. They only had one lighthouse. The Thatcher and Strathsmith Island Association is working to try and raise money for the second million in fundraising, grants, membership, and foundation money. Thatcher Island is 52 acres. They average 3,000 visitors per year. The island was deeded to the Town of Rockport in 2001. The Thatcher Island and Strathsmith Island Committee have invested over $4,500,000 to maintain and preserve this town-owned property. Failure to continue could cause this national historic landmark to revert to the federal government or loss of its national historic status. The Thatcher Island Committee has 1,200 members, and the Thatcher Island Committee has over 15 volunteers that provide in-kind service to restore and preserve this property. As Dr. Wedmore would say, that's a lot of sweat equity out there. In 2024, the volunteers contributed over 6,000 hours of labor to maintain and preserve both islands. Twin Lights and Thatcher Island are featured on our town seal because it's of historic significance and that they represent to us all. Fundraising will take place over the next four years, and they hope to have the work done in 2029. This past year, the volunteers have completely redone the end of the landing ramp, saving thousands of dollars that would have been needed if they used a private contractor. They continually look for ways to do smaller projects with volunteers and saving up money towards the money needed for this large restoration project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is whether to appropriate and transfer $200,000 from the Undesignated Fund to be expended by the Thatcher and Strathsmith Island Committee relating to the South Tower. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. And opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and it is unanimous. Second motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves Article E, second motion, as printed on page 56 of the voters' booklet. Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to appropriate and transfer $62,000 from CPC Undesignated Fund to be expended as a grant to the Sandy Bay Historical Society relating to the First Parish Church, oh, sorry, First Parish Cemetery on Beet Street. Ms. George.
Thank you. The old First Parish Burial Ground restoration, we have, we want to award them $62,200. This project falls under historic preservation. This application was submitted by the Sandy Bay Historical Society. A few years ago, the late Peter Beecham, member of the Board of Sandy Bay Historic, shared his vision for the restoration of the old First Parish Burial Ground across from Front Beach, which has been in very poor condition despite its very prominent location in Rockport. They propose now to take up his vision and complete this worthy project. Their first goal is stone cleaning, looking to clean each of the 900 head and footstones using ecologically-friendly D2 biological solution. They've already started doing this. This will be done by some trained volunteers and students. They've already been out there on Sadie's doing it and looking for volunteers to help. Their second goal is for grave repair and resetting, repairing the many broken gravestones and repositioning leaning and sunken graves that are off-center. The Rockport DPW maintains the lawning grounds, but it is not permitted to repair the broken stones or reposition the sunken stones. They propose to use Rob Siberian from Graveside Preservations. They've already engaged Rob to repair and reposition the first 42 stones closest to Front Beach. Their third goal is the Hearst House, that's up front, the little building. They want to repair or restore that. That is including a roof, a new roof, siding, enlarging the window and making it an anti-glare and stormproof. Inspect the foundation for rot and repair. The Hearst House has the actual 1836 Hearst inside, used to transport caskets to the burial grounds over many decades. It was on a float this past 4th of July, if you remember. Fourth goal is education. Continued research into many of the early settlers of Sandy Bay, which was what was Rockport called, including Richard Tah, who was the first settler in 1890. He's buried there, and he was buried in 1832. Richard Tah owned and donated this land for the cemetery to the town. Here also lie most of the early settlers and many officers and soldiers of the French and Indian Revolutionary and 1812 Wars, as well as the Civil War. Other prominent citizens in Rockport, such as Hannah Jumper, who was buried there in 1865, and Rockport was subsequently a dry town for the next 64 years. Rockport was subsequently, subsequently a dry town for the next 64 years. She was, they also propose an innovative initiative to enhance the education and interpretive experience for visitors to the burial ground. Through the installation of away-side markers equipped with QR codes, they can aim to create an engaging and accessible experience, self-guided tours, that preserve the integrity of the cemetery while bringing its rich history to life. By investing CPC funds in this initiative, we will transform the historic cemetery into an interactive educational resource that connects the past with the present in a meaningful way. This project not only preserves and honors our local history, but also ensures its relevance for future generations. This was well received when discussed with some of the elementary school teachers, who thought it was a great idea to use when students are learning about local history in town. Their goal number five was signage. They want to work on that. They're looking at using a piece of their Sandy Bay Historical Granite, the big piece that they have, and they would have engraved on that just the sign, the Old Burial Ground. It would be a low, small, long sign that said that up front. Goal number six are walkways. This would be to improve the walkway within the graveyard with the terrace, with a terraced walkway in the center path. This cost is not included in the project. If you notice, coming down from Mill Lane, it's very sunken in the middle and very uneven for people to walk down. A lot of people over the years walk through there and go down towards the beach. Goal number seven was the marker, and that's the restoration of Terrace Century Commission marker. You'll notice that they had DPW send that out, and that has been all renewed, and it looks beautiful down at the front of the burial ground. As you can see, this is a wonderful project with multiple goals. The Sandy Bay Historical Society revised their application down to $99,307 for the first phase. At our July 20, 2025 CPC meeting, citing limited funding this year and this being a multi-phase project, it was voted to approve $62,200 and to include the Hearst House restoration as part of their next application. I'm sure we'll be seeing them for the next several years working on this wonderful project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, the question for you is whether to appropriate and transfer $62,000 from the Undesignated Fund as a grant to the Sandy Bay Historical Society relating to the cemetery on Beach Street. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries and it is unanimous. Third motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves the third motion for Article E, which is printed on page 56 of the voters booklet. The Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend this article.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to appropriate and transfer $150,000 from the Undesignated Fund to be expended by the Department of Public Works related to the Rockport Public Library Denghausen Building on School Street as set forth on page 56 of the booklet. Ms. George?
Thank you. Library window replacement, masonry repairs for $150,000. This project falls under historic preservation. This building was part of an old cotton mill built in 1864. It was destroyed by a fire in 1882 and left in ruin for a period of about 22 years. The former owners deeded the property to the town of Rockport, who subsequently converted the remaining building to the elementary school on the School Street side. In 1938, the school was expanded along the Broadway side, and you can notice that when you drive by. You can see a little bit difference in the brick as it's going down Broadway. My dad went there, as did my brother and I, and many in this room tonight. In eight, in 1989, the town dedicate, decided to convert the existing Judge J Task Elementary School into the new Rockport Public Library after the existing library was deemed inadequate to serve the growing needs of the town. After three years of planning and extensive renovations, including a new elevator, new public restrooms, and a redesigned handicap-accessible rear entrance, the new 15,400-square-foot Rockport Library opened. The library is now part of the National Historic District. I'm sure many in this auditorium tonight can remember the day the books were moved hand by hand in a chain of residents, young and old, along Jewett Street to Main Street to the new School Street building. It sure took a village that day. This year's application was originally requesting $525,000. This was to look at window mantles, lintels, and it would, and, and, and all that would need to be stored with the, with the windows and the granite around them. The windows are in need of replacement as the masonry to seal the granite. This would be the first step in the process of looking at installing an HVAC system for the building. After much discussing with the DPW department, who is bringing this project forward, it was decided to revise this application to $150,000 for a phased approach. They have decided to start with an engineering evaluation and design and work with the historic committee for approval, and lastly, out for bidding. This would need 64 double-hung windows and 18 awning style, awning-style window units. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question before you is on appropriating and transferring $150,000 from Undesignated Fund to be expended by the DPW relating to the Rockport Public Library. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries and it is unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves fourth motion under Article E, printed on page 56. The Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to appropriate and transfer $38,300 from the Historic Preservation Reserve Account to be expended, expended by the DPW relating to the American Legion Building on Beach Street as set forth on pages 56 and 57. Ms. George?
American Legion Building Improvement Study for $38,300. This project falls under historic preservation. The building for the Rockport American Legion Edward Peterson Post was the former Beach Street School, built in the mid-1860s, and became Legion Hall July 7, 1930. In later years, money was obtained from the federal and state funds with the Board of Selectment approval and the American Legion Members and Legion Band Members to build the Legion Bandstand that was dedicated on July 22, 1938. This property is owned by the town and is leased to the Legion in a 99-year lease. This application was submitted by one of its members, Jeff Scatterday, whose family name goes back to one of the founding members of the Legion. It was originally looking at a lot of things needed, like renovating the historic structure inside from floors, electrical, heating, structural aspects on both the first and second floor. There was a lot going on with the first thought of what they needed to do. It was recommended that Jeff speak with the Rockport DPW Director Gary LeBlanc and Steve Bonapine from the office for additional assistance going forward. From there, they came up with an, with their original application request of the 38-3. That would be adequate to do an initial study of, and renovate and for renovations and improvements to the facility. They have reached out to Weston and Sampson for a quote for the scope of service to assist the town with anticipated interior upgrades and renovations. Utilizing CPC guidelines, this will probably be a phased approach with certain items that CPC can cover and, and won't be able to cover. This building was designated by our local historic commission to be historically significant to the town because of its age, and looking at the GIS maps with staff, it's also not located, it's not considered located in a flood plain, so we wanted to check that out also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is whether to transfer $38,300 from Historic Preservation Reserve to be expended by the DPW relating to the American Legion Building. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries and it is unanimous. Fifth motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves the fifth motion for Article E, which is printed on page 57 of the voters booklet. The Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to appropriate and transfer $90,000 from the CPC Historic Preservation Account to be expended by the Department of Public Works relating to repair of flooring in the community house on Broadway as set forth on page 57. Ms. George?
This project falls under historic preservation also. This is a project from the Department of Public Works for the repair slash replacements to the first and second floor of the community house. This building was used as an early schoolhouse. The community house was the subject of an earlier CPC application that was bonded by the town, and we are in our final years of paying off that bond. The floors are original to the structure and were not thought to need, not thought to be needed to be replaced or repaired at the initial time. Since the renovation, this building has seen significant increase in use, and therefore, the floors need attention. This being an old, original school, it has large, one, the first and second floor rooms with floors that, that have areas where the, the old desks and chairs were bolted to the floor, and in these areas, they're splitting and splintering, so we hope to keep as much of the original flooring as possible and feathering in new flooring to sort of match the old, and that's the concern. The original application was for flooring and outside building painting. The original application for this one was $151,000. Including in the original bonded project, we did painting. Therefore, additional painting would not be considered, it would be considered routine maintenance, so we couldn't fund that a second time. So, they revised it down to the $90,000. This building is historic and designated so by the local historic commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question before you is appropriating and transferring $90,000 from Historic Preservation to be expended by the DPW on the community house flooring. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries and it is unanimous. Sixth motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves sixth motion for Article E, printed on page 57 of the voters booklet. The Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to appropriate a total of $409,200 with $287,000 from the Estimated Reserve Account and $122,200 from the Open Space Recreation Reserve Account to be expended by the Department of Public Works relating to the Granite Pier Boat Ramp and surrounding area as set forth on page 57 of the voters booklet. Ms. George?
Thank you. This is for $409,200. This project falls under Recreation and Historic Preservation categories. This is a second-phase application for the Granite Pier Committee. Last year, they were awarded $140,000 for restoring the road surface around the ramp and doing a ramp study. In addition, an engineering study was done at the time of the WAF. This year's application is to build and install the, an extension structure to the bottom of the existing boat ramp, as recommended by the study carried out by Weston and Sampson last year. Also, to remove the unused and unsafe boat ramp at the end of the lower pier, which the Weston and Sampson study shows is severely undercut and unsafe for use. Granite Pier is the only working boat ramp in town. It is heavily used by both residents and non-residents. It is the only location where large boats can be launched without having to go to Gloucester. This ramp is essential for the maritime activities that Rockport is known for. This is a project that needed, that needs permitting, so it was very difficult with lots of moving parts to break it into phases. Additional costs would be attached to, to each phase if we did it that way. Optimistically, they would like to complete the work in one year after the funding is obtained. However, there are permit requirements and seasonal restraints that will have to be factored in. The current estimates are from Weston and Sampson's study and have not gone out to a formal bid yet. This area does have eel grass, but their underwater study says that the eel grass is away from where the extension will be put in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question before you is whether to appropriate a total of $409,200 as specified to be expended by the Department of Public Works relating to the Granite Pier Boat Ramp and area. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries and it is unanimous. Seventh motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves seventh motion for Article E as printed on page 57 of the voters booklet. Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to appropriate a total of $150,000, $40,000 from the Undesignated Fund, $110,000 from the Affordable Housing Reserve Account as a grant to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be expended by the trust as set forth on page 57 of the voters booklet. Ms. George?
Thank you. As you can see, this falls under affordable housing. This category of affordable housing is one of the two designated by the state and Department of Revenue that can bank money given by CPC for unspecified projects at the time of CPC approval. This is like the money that the Conservation Committee has gotten over the years to keep in reserve for a sudden parcel that they can take advantage of on short notice with Select Board approval. It's the same concept. We all know Rockport needs to work on affordable housing for seniors, single adults, and families with children. The town needs to work on reaching the state's mandate of 10% affordable housing and to meet the citizen demands. Currently, we're at about 4.44% of affordable housing in town. This past year, the trust has had a working group of stakeholders in the community from relevant committees like the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Rockport Housing Authority, and the Select Board, Town Administrator, and the Affordable Housing Trust. The Housing Production Plan and the Economic Feasibility Study are complete. The strategic plan is underway, talking with different folks in town about what they see as the need for housing in town. Members of this, members this year are keeping up with state and federal funding regulations, builders' needs, funding opportunities, and legal issues, zoning and permitting ordinances, trust and land law, and how affordable housing regulations work and apply for any potential projects in town. They are educating themselves, themselves through attending seminars and workshops and building partnerships in the field of affordable housing with groups like Habitat for Humanity and the Harbor Lake Community Partners. Their originally, their original application was for $275,000 and was voted on by CPC Committee, with money being tight this year, and this being a long-term project, we reduced it to the $150,000. We and CPC are committed to helping build up the reserve account for the trust to help promote good, appropriately-sized, and cited affordable housing for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Mr. Arsenean?
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. The aims of the Affordable Housing Trust are indeed admirable. Unfortunately, they're saddled with the state's heartless and dishonest definition of what is affordable. That's based on the area median income. The area stretches from south of Boston up to New Hampshire, and the median income for one person is just over $80,000. With a family of four, you could have, I'd forgotten, $120 or $130,000 a year in income and qualify. Such people may need help with housing or feel they do, can't afford to buy houses. You'd need two professional incomes and an inheritance to buy a house now, but such people are not needy. The state's definition entirely ignores the concerns of those who earn minimum wage, which would give you $31,000 a year. And the housing trust's aims are, as I said, admirable, hope to provide housing for a range of people, but would they be able to do so? They've said right from the beginning that they did not intend to build the housing. They don't have the qualifications, and I think that's probably sensible. So, they would be working with commercial or other developers, and unless miracles happen and other outfits like Harbor Lake step forward, they would be working with commercial developers, who would naturally aim to pitch whatever they build for those at the high-income end, because that's where the money is. I'm skeptical of anything coming of it, and I think that if we've had a working group of town officials, you know, all of that apparently has happened behind the scenes, and whatever they've come up with ought to be presented at a public hearing, so we see the works as they go forward. I might vote for this, or I might not vote, but I'm skeptical.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. Anyone else? Anyone else? Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, the question before you is whether to appropriate a total of 150,000 as specified as a grant to the Affordable Housing Trust. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries. Not unanimously. Eighth motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves eighth motion for Article E as shown on the screen. Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend. Please note, the motion on the screen is the latest motion correcting the location of the funding from the undesignated fund for this.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to appropriate $75,000 from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund as a grant to Action. Ms. George.
Thank you. Again, this falls under affordable housing in a different way that we can help people who are Rockport residents. This application is by Action, Inc., out of Gloucester. This program assists low and moderate income residents of Rockport, maintaining housing stability. This application aligns with the affordable housing category for supporting affordable housing, for preventing displacement, and ensuring that residents experiencing financial hardship can remain in their homes in town. This program serves Rockport residents only who face temporary financial instability due to job loss, unexpected medical expenses, or aging in place without significant income. Without assistance, these households are at risk for eviction, foreclosure, homelessness, which can be devastating for individuals, families, and costly to the community. By assisting with areas or providing short-term subsidies for future rent or mortgage payments, the program allows residents to remain housed while they stabilize their financial situation. This program integrates with Action's broader, broader supportive services, including case management, financial literacy, and job training to help participants achieve long-term stability beyond the immediate assistance provided. Action will use 100% of the funds from CPC for direct payment to landlords, et cetera, while administrative costs will be covered by other funding. The great majority of applicants apply to address an acute need rather than any chronic financial burden. Applicants on the program usually are on it for no more than three to four months. We have given to Action in the past, and they have stretched their funding over multiple years each time they've received their request from us. Their last application was in 2021, and that was for the same amount, 75,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is on appropriating $75,000 for Action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries and it is unanimous. Ninth motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves ninth motion under Article E as printed on page 57 of the voters booklet. Select Board and Community Preservation Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question is on whether to appropriate and transfer 100,000 from the undesignated fund to be expended by the town clerk relating the preservation of town records as set forth on page 57 of the voters booklet. Ms. George.
Thank you. This project funds, it falls under historic preservation also in a different way. This application is submitted by the town clerk, Melanie Waddell. It is a proposal for restoration, preservation, and digitalization of the oldest and most at-risk volumes of the town's vital records and permanent documents dating back to our town's incorporation in 1840. This request is part of a larger effort that includes the restoration of the public records vault in Town Hall. The vault restoration would provide adequate archival shelving and ensure an appropriate environment for its contents. This collection, this collective effort works hard towards our lawful duty to protect and preserve our records in perpetuity. Our previous town clerk, Pat Brown, started this project, having all birth records, death records, and marital records digitalized. Those original records are currently unbound and suffered deterioration. The only vital records that have been rebound and encapsulated in archival pockets are the years 2000 to 2024. The proposal is for a phased approach to be completed in the next three to five years. We would start with the oldest and most at-risk volumes of the town's vital records as recommended by a free assessment conducted by a company called Cofile, and that was in January this year. This phase should be to digitalize and preserve all vital ledger books, the oldest nine volumes of births, nine volumes of marriages, and 11 volumes of death records. Permanent records are by their nature of historical and cultural importance to the town. We must lawfully store, maintain, and preserve these irreplaceable cultural artifacts and must provide adequate and secure archival storage to protect our historic town documents, not only because we are legally required to do so, but to maintain their historic public resources for future generations. They cite Mass. General Law's Section 11 Fireproof Vaults and Safes and Section 12 Arrangement of Records. The town clerk's office has also gone to the CIPC, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, for assistance in purchasing a storage system designated to protect the integrity of the documents required to be kept in perpetuity. Space has also been created in the vault design for future restoration and archiving of our maps. Other files in the vault include planning and zoning files, town meeting files, deeds and town-owned land files, and election materials and storage of election records that must, that do have retention requirements. The original application was submitted for 190,000. After lengthy discussion with Melanie and the CPC committee at its July meeting, it was reduced for its initial request, Phase One, of 100,000 to get the project started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question before you is whether to appropriate and transfer 100,000 from the undesignated fund to be expended by the town clerk relating to the preservation of records. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. George. The CPC is kind of like the Patriots in the 2000s. Very well done.
Thank you very much, everyone.
The next articles are going to be the four that I discussed at the start of the meeting, F, G, H, and I, which relate to the recodification effort, just to give you a primer.
Mr. Moderator, Town Clerk Melanie Waddell moves Article F motion as printed on page 58 of the voters booklet. The Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to renumber and recaption the general bylaws as set forth in the final draft of the Code of the Town of Rockport on file with the town clerk in Article F of the warrant. It requires a majority vote. Ms. Waddell.
Thank you. You've heard the motion for Article F, and the following presentation relates to Article F, G, H, and I, as they are all related to the codification of our bylaws. The Town of Rockport's general bylaws and zoning bylaw are presently being updated as charged by our general bylaws, by myself and the capacity of town clerk, in a Word document that was originally created in 2008. While this approach has served the town well to this point, in 2022, through a capital improvement funding request, I recommended that the town hire General Code LLC, a company with over 60 years specializing in municipal codification, to professionally codify and digitize our bylaws. My office was subsequently granted funding to begin. This process has identified inconsistencies and errors, is now well-arranged, well-edited, easy to read, and up-to-date. When published, it will be available in an online format that is easy to use and fully searchable, which provides for the transparency that is necessary in local government. Additionally, with this platform, the task of updating the bylaws in the future will be less onerous, as General Code will provide ongoing code supplementation and maintenance at the town's direction. At this time, General Code has completed its editorial and legal analysis. Each change has been reviewed by the Chair of the Planning Board, Chair of the Government and Bylaws Committee, Town Administrator, myself, and legal counsel, and both have been, excuse me, and both have been presented at separate public hearings. This has been a collaborative effort that I am grateful for, the efforts of all that have been involved. The proposed changes are set forth in two warrant articles for each bylaw, four in total, that reference a black line document entitled "The Final Draft of the Code of Town of Rockport," dated June 2025. The document is lengthy and has been available for viewing in the town clerk's office and on our website. A derivation table is included in the black line document at the end of chapter DT in order to assist code users in the transition of the new codes organization from the old. Also included is a disposition list that is a chronological list of legislation of the town adopted between 2023 and April 2025 and will be updated ongoing. After its adoption and approval by the Attorney General, the two sets of bylaws that we currently have will be combined into one document, referred to as Code of Bylaws of the Town of Rockport, or more simply, the Code, or Code of Bylaws. Article F addresses the reorganization of the general bylaws and is more self-explanatory, assigning chapter article numbers, renumbering sections, inserting section titles, updating internal references, and the like. Article G addresses minor changes to the text described as general revisions and specific revisions. The general revisions are a bit more self-explanatory. For example, updated references to Mass. General Law, minor spelling, punctuation, and grammar. The specific revisions, however, are a bit more detailed and have each been listed in the warrant articles. For example, there were duplications in definitions that have been deleted, updates to internal cross-references, aligning with Mass. General Law statutes, improved word choices, arrangement and placement of some of the definitions. So that is Article F and G somewhat mirror the next two, H and I. So I don't know if you want to start with F, and then we can move to G, and you could offer questions.
Sure. I think that makes sense. So, right now, F is before you. So I'll just restate the question again, and then we can go to discussion. Right now, the question before you is whether to renumber and recaption the general bylaws as set forth in the final draft of the Code on file with the town clerk. This requires a majority vote. Discussion. Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. If the zoning code, all of it, is going to be incorporated in the Code of Bylaws, we need to look again at the charge for the Government and Bylaw Committee, because I don't think that they're wishing to advise on zoning as well. Did someone consider that? How is that to be resolved?
I believe it's Massachusetts statute. The Planning Board is the governing body for the zoning bylaws, and the Government and Bylaw Committee would continue to do the general bylaws.
That's correct. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, the question before you is whether to renumber and recaption the general bylaws as set forth in the final draft as related by the town clerk in an Article F of the warrant. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries and it is unanimous. On to Article G.
Mr. Moderator, Town Clerk Melanie Waddell moves motion for Article G, printed on page 65 of the voters booklet. Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to amend the general bylaws by making non-substantive revisions, repealing specific bylaws, and making minor revisions as set forth on pages 58 to 65 of your voters booklet and in the final draft of the Code of the Town of Rockport on file with the town clerk in Article G of the warrant. Before we get there, there has been a request for a division. It is subject to division, and therefore I need to divide it at that request. So I'll try to make this efficient. If you all turn to page 64 of your voters booklets, page 64, down at the bottom on page 64, take a pen, and if you're with me, and let me know if anyone's not, at the bottom where, on the left, it says "Chapter 297, Street Names and Building Numbers," underscored. Below that is Section 297, Tac 2, is amended as indicated, and then there's a paragraph that starts "All Buildings in the Town" and ends with the language underscored, "Shall contrast with the background and shall be Arabic numerals or alphabet letters." Take a pen and circle that. We're going to set that aside, and we're going to get to that later. And we're going to deal with the rest of this motion now, and then we'll have to go back to that later because of the division of the question. Anybody have any difficulty following what I just said? Okay. So we have in front of us the motion under Article G on non-substantive revisions. Ms. Waddell.
Again, I'd just like to address that they are not substantive in nature, just maybe a bit more detailed than periods and commas and general grammar. So I, Brian and I have discussed perhaps going page by page of the voters booklet if anyone has specific questions on Article G.
So let's, Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Among the things that we're authorizing here are gendered pronouns, he, she, his, him, her, et cetera, are changed to their gender-neutral plural forms, they, them, their, as applicable. Apparently, we did this a couple of years back.
Mr. Arsenian, let me make this suggestion. I know you want to make a motion to amend. You gave me notice of that. I'll try to faithfully state your motion to amend, and then you can address it. Does that make sense?
Please do.
All right. If everybody turns to page 59 in their booklets, 59 of your booklets. Ms. Arsenian has made a motion to amend, which I'm now going to state. If you go up to the top third on the left, you'll find a line that says "Gendered Pronouns." Shout out if you're not with me. Gendered pronouns on the left. Okay. Here's the motion to amend. Mr. Arsenian moves to, after the parenthetical, insert the following words, "will remain unchanged," period, and to strike the following words, "are changed to their gender-neutral plural forms," parentheses, "they, them, their," comma, as applicable, period. So again, insert after the parenthetical that ends in et cetera, "will remain unchanged," period, delete all words, "are changed to their gender-neutral," comma, plural forms, parentheses, "they, them, their," as applicable. That is a proposed amendment to the motion. Did everybody at least follow the pen and ink changes on the proposed amendment? No? Okay. I'll do it again. Page 59, gendered pronouns. So take a pen. I'll read along. This is, this is the proposed amendment, how it would read if successful. We haven't gotten there yet because we haven't discussed it, but so you know what's being discussed. If successful, here's how this would read if Mr. Arsenian's motion persuades you to vote in favor of it, okay? It would read, gendered pronouns, parentheses, he, she, his, him, her, et cetera, close parentheses, "will remain unchanged," period. And that's it. That's how it would read if his motion to amend passes. If his motion to amend fails, it will read as you see now in the printed form. Anybody not follow that? Follow that? Don't be shy. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. The question on the floor is whether to amend the motion as I've just stated, so that on page 59, it would read as follows, gendered pronouns, he, parentheses, he, comma, she, comma, his, comma, him, comma, her, comma, et cetera, close parentheses, "will remain unchanged." That is the motion on the floor as a motion to amend. Mr. Arsenian.
Before, it was assumed that all public officials were men, and we said he throughout the, you know, the zoning and the bylaws. Obviously, that's not acceptable or sensible. It should say he or she. And when you're talking about an individual, you don't say they or them. That's grammatically incorrect. It may be politically correct, but it's not. And you can have your cake and eat it too by saying he or she after you have first referred to whatever official we're speaking of. So have your cake and eat it too. So have your cake and eat it too and show some respect for the English language, our glorious common heritage, one of the few things holding the country together.
All right. The question on the floor is Mr. Arsenean's motion to amend only. That's only in front of you. Is there any further discussion on Mr. Arsenean's motion to amend? Ms. Waddell.
Gender-neutral language in our bylaws has been a topic of discussion before. In the fall of 2022, we changed select men to select board. In any other instance within the bylaw, codification terms such as policeman and fireman have been replaced with police officer or firefighter. The general bylaws currently offers the use of the word person as a substitute for a personal pronoun. In many cases, the wording in the sentence becomes awkward when you replace he or her with person. The sentence just becomes even worse, I think, as far as the English language goes. It was a decision that I made during the process. It's a convention that many other communities are moving forward with and that's my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Waddell. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am. Have we got a mic runner over here? Thank you.
Lynda Medits, 98 Main Street. Melanie, would it read any less awkwardly to use they or them when referring to a single person? And could the meaning be obscured to make something plural that isn't technically plural than going with something like person? Although I would support Toby's hope to keep our English grammar intact and use single pronouns as appropriate.
Okay, I'll take that as a comment directed at the chair and I'll see if Ms. Waddell can provide clarification. Can you provide clarification on that?
I mean, it's either he/her throughout the entire bylaw or as it's been presented since June, there are multiple examples throughout the black line that's been on the website and available in the town clerk's office. I hadn't gotten any other feedback until now regarding this.
Any further discussion?
Good evening. Amy Oaks, 18 Jewett Street. I serve on Rockport's school committee. I would just point out that over the past two years, the school committee of Rockport has reviewed and revised every single one of its school committee policies and has already made this shift to they. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Someone got a hand up? I don't see anybody. If you're... Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Skyless Reed, 25 Norwood Avenue. Language changes and also they/them has been used historically to refer to singular as well as plural for hundreds of years. You can look back, look it up online. As a non-binary visual who uses they/them pronouns, I think this makes total sense to just change it. We use they/them to refer to people who we don't know who they are all the time. Who is it on the phone? Who are they? The tell marketer. Who knows?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, the question before you is whether or not to adopt Mr. Arsenean's proposed amendment so that the motion will read, "Gendered pronouns will remain unchanged", period. That's the question before you. If you want to adopt Mr. Arsenean's amendment so that it would read genders, gendered pronouns, he, she, his, him, her, et cetera, will remain unchanged, period, you will want to vote yes. If you do not want to adopt Mr. Arsenean's amendment, you will vote no. We're going to vote by electronic means for this, so I'm probably going to restate this to death. You will have 12 seconds from when I say the words, "Vote now". You will press 1 or A for aye if you support Mr. Arsenean's motion. You will press 2 or B for no if you oppose the motion. The motion requires a majority of the voting members to pass. Is anyone confused on the question you're about to vote on? All right. All those in favor of Mr. Arsenean's amendment will press 1 or A for aye. All those opposed will press 2 or B for no. Ready? Vote now, 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 now. That motion fails. So on to...
Can you read the numbers? I can't...
Sure, I'm sorry. I shouldn't be doing that. 35% yes, 65% no, and the numerical count, 73 yes, 138 no. Thank you, Ms. Waddell. I should be doing that.
Thank you.
So that motion fails. We're now on to the rest of the motion except for the portion that I had you all outline and set aside as a division. And so if I remember right, we're on the motion under Article G. Any further discussion on Article G?
Do you want to go page by page?
Yeah, I do. Yes, you're right. I'm sorry. Yes, great idea, which I was supposed to do on my own. All right. So Article G starts at 58 of your voters booklet and goes through to page 65. So let's just start, if we're together, on 58. It's towards the bottle, towards the bottom. You can see the article and then you can see under summary of general revisions, the beginning of the motion. And so let's just start with the bottom, page 58 through 59. What we just discussed on gendered pronouns is on page 59. So any further discussion on 58 or 59? Did I hear a yes?
Hi, Heathrich E. Woodbury Hill. I noticed that we're repealing, the proposal includes the repeal of a bylaw somehow related to off-road vehicles, which seems more than... What was the word you used for the minerness of the changes? So I was just wondering if I could get an explanation about whether that is in fact a minor change. Thank you.
Yes. Chapter 14E, Section 4, Off-Road Vehicles, is a redundant section that the GBL planned to delete at town meeting. The chair approved this deletion. This Section 4 was incorporated into Chapter 11, Motor Vehicles, Streets and Parking in 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Waddell. Any further discussion on 58 or 59? All right. If we turn together, page 60. Any discussion on page 60? Mr. Arsenean, hold on for one second. I'm just going to see if there's anyone else who wants to stop on 60. All right, Mr. Arsenean.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite. On page 60, Chapter 27, Community Preservation, it says 27-2A, amended as indicated. And then the underline portion, which I gather is being added, including the consideration of regional projects for community preservation. And yet again, this is the state ordering us what to do. They're interested in promoting regional things and I think it's altogether a mistake. I'm wasting my breath and your time because if we can't undo what they've done. But we can ignore it and we don't have to fund regional projects. We've already funded two, the Fresno Lens, which we in fact don't own. We were only given custody of it. It was parked over at the Cape Town Museum and we funded the kiddie pool at the YMCA. But they're ordering the language. I think that's unfortunate. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. Anyone else on page 60?
This change to the Community Preservation Committee was approved specifically by the town administrator with concurrence of the chair of the Government and Bylaw Committee and myself as it updates our bylaw to bring it in line with the state statute.
Thank you. Anyone else on 60? Seeing no takers, let's go on to 61. Anyone wish to address page 61? I'll move on to page 62. Absent objection? Yes, ma'am? Hang on for a mic. Sorry. Could you state your name and address?
Claire Harper, 24 Hyphy Road. You're going through these really quick. If you could slow down a little?
Oh, sure. I'm just...
Explain what we're going on.
Happy to. Let's go back to 60. And if anybody wants to stop, then we'll stop. A lot of people here, for all I know, you're all saying, "Get on with it, Sullivan", so that's... Fair enough.
Just be quick. Like a little summary so we know what's going on. Okay, thank you.
Well, the summary was given by the clerk and I'll go back to her. But let me go back to 60. Everybody take a look at page 60. Scan it. You want to go?
We did hold public hearings, which we went over in great detail, all of these changes. I mean, if the town would like it, I can go through every single one. I do have commentary. That's what we did at the public hearings. I was trying to avoid that by going page by page and that's how it's been done in other communities.
I guess I'm just worried about anything substantive.
So all of these are non-substantive. You can see what is added in an underscore language. I'm going to slow it down a little bit, but I'm going to read the room. If you want me to stop, if someone really wants me to stop and they want to focus in on something, let me know and we'll do that. Otherwise, I'm going to move it along, but I'll try to slow the pace a little bit, all right? Is that okay? All right.
And the purpose of the codification was not to have substantive changes, but really to reorganize and have an editorial analysis. And in certain circumstances, there was recommendations to legal analysis as well. But in those cases, it was really just putting us in line with mass general law and other state statutes and just ensuring that what we had in our bylaw was correct.
So this is a reformulating and a consolidation into a general code. We've got plenty of, some substantive changes coming later. Page 60. Anybody want to stop on page 60 and take more time? Don't be shy. Page 61. Don't be shy. Page 61. Public Works Select Board. All right. Moving on to page 62. If anybody wants to go back, speak up. Page 62. Yes? Okay. Anyone else? Looking for hands? I don't see any. Mr. Arsenean, page 62.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite. This can't be changed at this point, but what we have in the way of procedure for appointing members of the Government and Bylaw Committee really is not satisfactory as a public process. You know, people follow the process as it's written, you know, Ts are crossed, Is are dotted, but it's not adequate. The Appointing Committee, and we need an amendment to fix this, can't be done here. The Appointing Committee, which is the...
All right. Mr. Arsenean, just hold on for one minute. Right now, the only change is the change from chairman to chair. If I understand, Ms. Waddell, am I correct that that's literally the only change? Okay. So we're not, so we are not right now doing anything of substance to how that committee is constituted or appointed. If you want to address the leading man from chairman, go right ahead, but otherwise, I've got to move on.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else on 62? All right. Over to 63.
Thank you. Lori McKenna, 31 High Street. I have a question at the bottom of the page, Chapter 279, Signs. It looks like we are deleting existing language so that political and religious signs can be greater than six square feet. Is that...
So, no. I appreciate the observation. It may be worthy of some clarification. So if you look, the words political and religious are being deleted and they are, they would be included with personal. In other words, all signs, whether you want to talk about the Boston Marathon on a sign or your politics on a sign, they're all regulated the same. That's the purpose of that, so it's not violative of the First Amendment. We can't have statutes that start to pick out political and religious speech and say we're going to regulate you differently. So they're still regulated, but not as religious or as political speech, but as personal speech versus potentially commercial or something like that. Do you follow me?
I do, but is there a different stipulation for commercial? What kind of messages are there?
So there is, and I'll let somebody get to that so I don't screw it up. But did I state that correctly as far as the First Amendment goes, counsel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Moderator, through you, this proposed bylaw amendment is the only amendment that's being made to that section and also this, I believe, is the one that you had pulled out to be discussed separately.
But it's not going to happen. It's not.
And this, what is here is an interim fix. There is a more complete update that the Government and Bylaws Committee is planning to do to our signed bylaw for the Springtown Meeting in 2026. This was just to address First Amendment rights, so it was kind of an interim fix.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Anyone else on whatever page we were on? 63. Yes. Oh, Denise, thank you. Ms. Donnelly, thank you.
Thank you. Denise Donnelly, 72 Pigeon Hill Street. I think there might be a typo. Section 262-7B, the definition of disposable food service ware, should that be?
The definition of disposal, that should be disposable?
I think so.
The only thing that's had a disposable food service ware? Oh, disposal.
And so that's actually repeating language that's already there. So that's a typo if it is that might need to be fixed at another time.
In the original.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donnelly.
Noted.
Anything else on 63? All right. Moving on to 64. Keeping in mind that the bottom of 64, we're setting aside for the moment. Anyone else on 60? Specifically, Chapter 297, Street Names and Building Numbers. That's not before you at the moment. Anything else on 64? All right. Moving over to page 65. Anyone want to discuss anything on page 65 relating to Article G or the motion under Article G? All right. Seeing none, any further discussion on the current question before you? All right. Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question before you is whether to amend the general bylaws, making non-substantive revisions, repealing specific bylaws, and making minor revisions set forth on 58 to page 65, with the exception of the portion of the question which has been set aside under Section 297-2, under Chapter 297, Street Names and Building Numbers. It requires a majority vote. Is there any confusion on what we're voting on? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
That motion carries. So now we're going to go to the severed or the divided portion of the question, which is on the bottom of page 64 again, Chapter 297, Street Names and Building Numbers, Section 297, Tac 2 is amended as indicated, and then there's the substantive paragraph, well, the non-substantive change, but the paragraph below that.
Mr. Moderator, do you want to go back and do that other vote electronically?
Which vote?
The vote on the article, the portion we just finished.
There was one against her.
Do you want to say that for the record then, that there was one?
Oh, sure. The last vote was all in favor, save for one, one vote. So not unanimous, but close. Okay. So now before you is the divided question, Chapter 297, Street Names and Building Numbers, Section 297, Tac 2 is amended as indicated, and then the paragraph below that. Do you want to address that?
Yes. So the addition to our current bylaw says, "shall contrast with their background and shall be Arabic numerals or alphabet letters". These were updates to state fire codes, again, bringing our bylaw into, in line with state statute.
Thank you, Ms. Waddell. Mr. Arsenean, this was your divided question.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite. Maybe my objection is out of order. I think we're only supposed to talk about "shall contrast with their background". Is that correct?
That is correct.
Oh, well, the whole thing is rotten and unfair and needs to be rewritten and it's ordered by the state yet again. And maybe you'll be ordered to wear a dog tag and a wrist bracelet as at the hospital, but it can't be addressed here. Only vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. Your objection is noted for the record. So... So now, the vote is only on the portion of the motion as it relates to Section 297, Tac 2, at the bottom of page 64. Is anyone confused on what we're about to vote on? Requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
That motion carries, not unanimously, save for one negative vote. On to, I believe, H.
Thank you for your patience. This is something that we've all been working on for a year and a half, so I appreciate your patience. Article H.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, Town Clerk Melanie Waddell moves that Article H be approved as printed in the motion on page 66 in the Voters' Booklet. The Select Board and the Planning Board recommend approval.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to renumber and recapture the zoning bylaw as set forth in the final draft of the Code of the Town of Rockport, again on file with the Town Clerk, and set forth in Article H of the warrant. It requires a majority vote. Ms. Waddell.
Article H, similar to the first one we heard, Article F, it addresses the reorganization of the bylaws, assigning chapter article numbers, renumbering sections, inserting section titles and updating internal references and such. It also designates the zoning bylaw as Chapter 400 of the new code of the Town of Rockport.
Thank you, Ms. Waddell. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, the question is whether to renumber and recapture the zoning bylaw per the final draft of the code. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries and it is unanimous. Article I.
Mr. Moderator, Town Clerk Melanie Waddell moves Article I motion as printed on page 70 of the Voters' Booklet. Select Board and Planning Board recommend.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to amend the zoning bylaws, again, making non-substantive revisions and minor revisions, set forth on pages 66 through 70, which we will again go through one page at a time when we get rolling of the Voters' Booklet and in the final draft of the Code of the Town of Rockport on file with the Town Clerk. This will require a two-thirds vote. Ms. Waddell.
In this article, as well as being similar to she, addresses minor changes to the text described in the general revisions and specific revisions. The general revisions are more self-explanatory, for example, updates to mass general law, minor spelling, punctuation and grammar. The specific revisions are a bit more detailed and have been listed in the warrant articles. Duplications in definitions being deleted, updates to internal cross-references aligning with mass general law statutes, improved word choices, arrangement and placement of some definitions. Yeah, so if you want to go page by page, I'm happy to...
Thank you, Ms. Waddell. All right, so again, I'm going to go each page. If anybody wants me to slow down, don't be shy. If anybody wants to speak, speak up, get my attention. We'll just start at the bottom of page 66 of your Voters' Booklet, the summary of general And I'm going to turn over to page 67, which then at the top starts with specific minor revisions. Again, these are non-substantive. You can see the line-outs, you can see the underscored insertions on page 67. Continuing down page 67, if we go over to page 68. Yes, sir? Got a mic for you.
Peter Goodwin, 6th North Road. About halfway down the page where it says Section 400-35 is amended, we have a typo here. The way it reads is the zoning board of appeals may grant permits of equipment of or facilities to utilize. Doesn't make sense. Yeah, Melanie, I sent you a note on that some time ago. I don't know whether you found it or not.
Sorry, I didn't receive it.
Okay.
Well, just...
I don't recall what the correction was.
Hang on. Maybe we can, maybe we can get it right here and make it. So, reading along, Mr. Goodwin, Section 400-35 is amended as indicated. Quote, the underscore, zoning board of appeals may grant permits or...
Make...
Of or.
It should be four.
Permits...
Four.
Four.
Great.
Equipment or facilities. That's what it is.
Four, okay.
May grant permits for equipment or facility.
Okay, so let me, I'm going to read it and here's how I'm going to propose a read. Section 400-35 is amended as indicated. Quote, the zoning board of appeals may grant permits for equipment or facilities to utilize alternative energy sources. So we take out of. That's what we need to do? All right.
And add an F.
And add in...
An F for four.
Oh, sorry, right. An add-in F. The way I read it, right. F with four. Okay. All right, with unanimous consent, we can all make that change to the motion. And I note we have unanimous consent. That amendment is made. Continuing on, on page 68. Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Page 68. Any further discussion? Moving over to page 69. On the non-substantive changes on page 69, we move down through page... Yes, ma'am? And we'll get you a mic. Right down here in the middle. Thank you.
Amy Seaborn, 5 Row Avenue, a clarification question at the bottom of page 69, where it says areas of aquifers that currently or could provide, or could provide significant drinking water. How about quarries? Does that include, are we changing the bylaws?
I would think that that by definition, areas which could provide significant drinking water by definition would include a quarry. Anybody disagree with that?
So are we changing the bylaws to include quarries and possibly privately-owned quarries because it could possibly provide water to the Town of Rockport?
I believe that's always been true, but...
The underlined document says or could. I'm not too sure if the historical document says could.
Which currently or could, meaning, okay. Ms. Waddell, go ahead.
The only change here is the underlined sentence was actually in a paragraph above. I think it got separated at some point when it was, it just, it got separated. So, we weren't changing the definition, we were just putting the initial sentence back onto the paragraph that existed.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. And that brought us to the bottom of 69. Anyone else on 69? And over to 70. Anything on page 70? All right, any further discussion on the motion that's been made under Article I? All right, we're going to use electronic, well, let's try it this way first. The question before you is to amend the zoning bylaws, making non-substantive changes and revisions as set forth on 66 to 70 of the Voters' Booklet, as we just went through it, and in the final draft of the Code of the Town of Rockport on file with the Town Clerk. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. And that passes unanimously.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I'm sorry, again, this has been a really exciting project to work on in my first term and it really increases accessibility and efficiency for everyone, so I thank you for your, your time and your votes.
Well, I think we all want to thank the Town Clerk and the GBL again, and the Town Administrator. Ton of work. So we are now on, you know, so we're now back to the lottery system.
And I can pick those out? I picked R.
All right, R is in the jumble of general bylaw articles that are related. As a matter of logic, 1K ought to come first, then followed in alphabetical order, J, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T. So we'll have a motion under Article R? I'm sorry? Oh, oh, sure, I'll find the page for you. We'll get the motion up and then I'll be happy to do that.
Are we going to start with J or...
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves Article K in the motion printed on page 75. Select Board does not recommend and the Government and Bylaw Committee recommends.
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded. The motion before you, the question before you is whether to amend Chapter 2, Section 5 of the general bylaws relating to individual speakers at town meeting as set forth on pages 75 and 76 of the Voters' Booklet. It requires a majority vote. Ms. Kaiser.
Good evening. I'm Lori Kaiser, Chair of the Government and Bylaw Committee. Before we begin presenting the Government and Bylaw warrant articles, I wanted to give just a brief introduction to those who are new to town meeting. Government and bylaw is a five-member board which, whose purpose is to serve the town meeting by reviewing and suggesting changes to the bylaws. Government and bylaw will be presenting 11 articles this evening, which will substantially wrap up the ongoing bylaw review initiated five years ago. It should be noted that each of these articles were subject to Government and bylaw research and study, meetings with other town officials and committees, multiple public hearings and public comment and review by town council. And if you'd like to follow along on the Voters' Booklet, the Government and bylaw committee report on each article follows the actual article beginning on page 75. And the first motion before us this evening is Article K, and that amends the bylaw, Chapter 2, Section 5F, limitation on speakers. This bylaw was initiated by the Town Clerk in response to significant interest from the townspeople to reduce the length of town meeting by limiting the amount of time that people can speak at the meeting. They requested that the amount of time for the proponents of a motion be reduced from 10 minutes to seven and subsequent speakers from five to three minutes. The right of town meeting to increase this time remains in the bylaw as before, but Government and bylaw added the provision that the town moderator can also increase the time, since this is an innate power of the moderator to run the meeting. Government and bylaw is in favor of this bylaw change because functionally, this leaves it in the hands of the moderator to increase time if needed, but it otherwise encourages people to be more succinct.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser, Mr. Murphy, for the Select Board.
I'll try to be brief. I want to thank all of you in attendance here tonight for your continued support and participation in our town meeting. I believe the open town meeting is the purest of all government, where every voter has a say on the direction of the town. Your voice matters deeply and we are grateful to have all of you here for your thoughtfulness that you bring to these meetings. I would like to address an important change that we are considering for town meeting regarding the length people can speak about an issue, and we are debating that right now, whether to change the allotted time, which is currently at five minutes, and reduce it to three. Proponents of this change do not make it, take this lightly, and we recognize that every resident deserves the opportunity to speak and to be heard. However, as town meetings have grown longer and more complex, we have found that more concise format would be helpful to ensure that all voices are heard without the meeting stretching late into the evening. We had one resident at our annual town meeting in April speak for a total of 58 minutes. I think this change will allow more residents to participate while keeping our discussion focused, productive, and the meeting moving along productively and efficiently. I want to be clear, this is not about limiting your voice, it's about making space for more voices. I believe three minutes is a sufficient amount of time for speakers to share their thoughts clearly and effectively. If, if more time is needed, the town moderator has the, at his discretion, the ability to allow a speaker to continue after that allotted time. I appreciate your understanding and consideration for this amendment. Our goal is, or this article, our goal is always to foster a respectful and efficient government where everyone has a chance to contribute. I urge your support on this article. Thank you.
You're urging support of the article, Mr. Murphy? You're urging opposition to the article?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy's urging a no, a no vote. The Board of Select, the Board of Selectmen recommends against adoption of the motion. He's urging a no vote. Did I state that correctly? I'm going to go back to Mr. Murphy and let him clarify that, but the Select Board is voting against it as announced by the Town Administrator. Ms. Waddell, further discussion?
Melanie Waddell, 15 Haven Avenue. I support this article. In listening to all of you over the years, I propose this amendment to the Government and Bylaws Committee as a solution to what I hear as the number one complaint about town meeting. How long meetings last has to be the number one and main reason some residents say they don't come to meeting at all. In this proposal, there was no intent to restrict anyone's voice. This was proposed as a possible solution to help town meeting become more efficient. In my experience, sitting at the dais for five years with the help of Courtney running the time clock for each speaker during town meetings, residents are generally able to get their point across in under three minutes. I really wish that there had been more meeting before this article was called because I was going to prepare to give you data on how long everybody spoke, but we've been moving along quite efficiently and I don't have that. But I did poll 45 other towns to find out what their guidelines are. In 23, the moderator has full discretion over speaking time. And only four of them have a bylaw like we do. But in the ones that do have time limits, an average of seven minutes is given to the proponents of an article and three minutes is given to follow-up comments, just as is being proposed today. Additionally, as mentioned before, this amendment allows for the moderator to grant more time if it is needed for someone to finish their comment. It works towards creating a more efficient meeting and more opportunity for more people to be heard before someone moves the question. Thank you for considering a yes vote on this article.
Thank you, Ms. Waddell. I want to clarify what just happened. I, I had asked the Select Board, did I do with anything if they've taken a position, if they want to speak to it? So, my understanding, Mr. Murphy was speaking for the Select Board. He wasn't, he was speaking for himself. So, I'm sorry that I confused the issue, but the Select Board, your Select Board is recommending against the article, the motion, as Mr. Viera stated, Mr. Murphy was speaking for himself. So, with me cleaning up the mess that I made, is there anybody from the Select Board that wishes to speak for the Board? And that was a sneak in, Mr. Murphy, because I was asking the Board to speak, but you did it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ross Brackett, Select Board, 27 Main Street. The Board voted, I believe it was three to two at this point. Main point is, our Board, our policy is five minutes. So that's, that's the position I pushed when I, when I made the opposition to this article. So, with that said, I also want to state, as earlier mentioned today, that the bylaw works for you, the town meeting, not the moderator, so there is no reason why they should be trying to restrict the time given to you to speak at a town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brackett. Any further discussion?
Okay. I've spent a good chunk of my long, long life standing up in front of people, making a case for one thing or another. I always write out what I'm going to say in advance, so it is organized and to the point. Those of you who have heard my presentations at the Sandy Bay Historical Society may recognize my adherence to a script. Effective speaking is to the point and focused on the issue at hand. If something needs to be said here at town meeting, unlike, you know, you don't always get to write it out the way I do, but try, at least write out a little outline of what you want to say. What are the main points? Make the point... Make the point before you get to the microphone. And I'm thinking, if this amendment, if this motion helps us get things focused, it will be an improvement over some perhaps previous presentations. And that whole thing took a minute and 10 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Seavey. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, Heath Ritchie, 1 Woodbury Hill. Thank you all for coming tonight. If any of you feel moved to speak about what we're doing as a town meeting, I would like to hear what you have to say. And I'm going to vote against this.
Thank you, sir. Ms. McKenna? I've got two voters, and then I'll go to you, Mr. Arsenean. Actually, they have both spoken already. I'm sorry about that. Who's got the mic? You, ma'am? Go ahead.
Claire Harper, 24 Hyview Road. I just think it's concerning when the people in power can talk as long as they want and comment as much as they want, and they're telling us, keep it short. I think we should be able to speak for five minutes. And some people are more organized with their thoughts. They need more time, or 10 minutes. They're first-time speakers, so I'm against this.
Thank you. Ms. McKenna?
Lori McKenna, 31 High Street. I'm also against this. I recognize it'd be nice if town meeting went faster and we were clearer, but I think people should have the full five minutes. Not everyone, especially if it's something they want to speak on, they may be emotional about it, they may not be able to get their thoughts together, and let's let them drone on. They came to meeting, let's hear what they have to say, and then decide. So I'm against this. I think we should have the full five minutes. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. And we'll go to you, Mr. Arsenean, before we do that. Since the moderator's come up, I'm not taking a position on this. I'll just tell you what my practice is. I think it might be useful for you as you're considering it. As Ms. Kaiser said, the Chair, under the General Laws, has discretion to regulate order in the meeting and has discretion to expand or limit time. I'll tell you how I do that and don't do that. Any of you who've been to a complicated zoning article know I have provided more time for the Planning Board to present something as complex as the MBTA Communities Act and the TOVID, for example. There's no way that could be done in 10 minutes. I have never used that discretion to limit an individual speaker's time. The clock runs, the presenter gets 10 minutes, the people responding after get five. I've never once said, you can't have your five, or you can't have your 10. It's been my anecdotal observation that most subsequent speakers speak from anywhere from two to three minutes. I do ask people to focus their remarks if I think they're drifting off the main point, but I have never said, I'm not going to let someone speak for five minutes or 10 minutes. So I just offer that to you for what it's worth. Mr. Arsenean?
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. We're told that people don't come to the town meeting because it's too long. That's hearsay. The fact is that people come to the town meeting when they feel their interests are at stake. Witness the meeting on blowers. Witness the meeting on the Long Beach seawall. If people feel that their ox is going to be gored, they're here. That's the case, however long it takes. To present an article is easy for the selectmen or Chairs of Committee. They're well-prepared beforehand. If you have alternate views and wish to present them, most people lead busy lives. Don't go to meetings of town boards and committees. You've got an uphill battle in front of you to try and fill in the background in five minutes. It will be impossible in three. If you simply can't stand sitting here, you can call the question. That shortens the meeting. I think it's a poor thing to do, although he doesn't say it in so many words. Brian Sullivan also advises against it. And in the past, the ministers have repeatedly said that we should make a genuine effort to listen to one another. Even if you think the person up there is a bore and a fool, try listening. And if you want to call the meeting short, you can call the question. And if you simply can't stand it, it's still a free country, you can get up and leave. I think that's unfortunate, but no one has the right to reproach you. Numbers of people who don't go to the meetings say it's stacked. I tell them, it's not stacked. But controlling the warrant and the motions gives the powers that be, town government, enormous leverage. So it's an uphill battle if you want anything else, and you need the five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean.
People here?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Hi, Daniel Palmer, 1 Lowest Lane. Just wondering if there, you said that there was a lot of prep work that went into this. Do we have a number on how many minutes we are going to save if we vote in favor of this?
Not sure that's calculable, but thank you. If we can get an answer, we will. Yes, sir?
Dan O'Donnell from 52 Main Street. I end up thinking, it's not like if we change this, we can never change it back. And I also don't hear anybody talking to make it go longer. I mean, freedom of speech, you know, geez, should take a half an hour? Three minutes, people can usually make their point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wessel?
Lorraine, can you get near that mic?
I'm sorry. Lorraine Wessel, 45 Main Street. I'm speaking as a resident and not the Chair of the Finance Committee. I think that we need to think about the town as a whole and not the small segment of this town that's represented here. I can't tell you how many people that I speak to that don't come to town meeting, not because it's long, but it's because certain subjects are unnecessarily prolonged by certain people, and it's really hard to sit through it. So I think we need to think about the rights of the whole town and not certain people who want to belabor points and just go on and on about subjects where we already get the point. I agree 100% with Melanie Waddell, and I think that we should vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wessel. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, the question before you is whether to amend Chapter 2, Section 5 of the General Bylaws relating to individual speakers at town meeting as set forth on pages 75 and 76 of the Voters' booklet. This requires a majority vote to pass. We're going to use electronic voting to do that. You will have 12 seconds from when I say the words "vote now." You will press 1 or A for "aye," if you support the motion. You will press 2 or B for "no," if you oppose the motion. Is anyone confused on what we're about to vote on? All right. All those in favor of the motion, press 1 or A for "aye." All those opposed, press 2 or B for "no." Ready? Vote now, 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 now. That motion passes 57% to 43%, and the numerical count is 123 to 91. And we are on to a motion under Article J.
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves, motion for Article J is printed on page 74 of the Voters' booklet. Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to amend Chapter 10, Section B of the General Bylaws relating to animal control as set forth on pages 71 to 75 of the Voters' booklet. It requires a majority vote.
Susan Willis from the Government and Bylaws Committee. This bylaw does not have any significant substantive changes to the animal control bylaw that's already been in place. There are some logistical changes, and I'm just going to try to go through them quickly. The Purpose Clause was removed because we've taken the Purpose Clause really out of all the bylaws as something that's unnecessary. Most of the other revisions are to improve clarity and to make sure that the bylaw is consistent both with town practices and with state law. As an example of that, the fines were updated to meet minimum state fine requirements. We also added reference to the state statutes if anybody sort of wanted to figure out, there's obviously, seems to be a lot going on with animal control, so there are a number of state statutes which have been listed if people want to sort of see the underlying rationale. There are two things that came up as questions, and I just wanted to address them briefly. There's one, Section 3 of the animal control bylaw lists prohibited areas for dogs as cemetery grounds, public schools during school hours, and beaches between June 1 and September 15. None of that's new. That's what's been in place. There is, however, a new definition, an exception, for trained guide dogs and service animals. That exception had been in place, but it wasn't defined clearly. The way this is printed, however, in your Voters' book makes it look as if the exception only applies to beaches, and someone raised that with the Chair. In fact, it applies to cemeteries, schools, and beaches. It's just a punctuation error. So rest assured, we're not ignoring that. The second thing that came up today was a question about whether in Section 4, Control of Animals, which, you know, is essentially the leash law, there's no change in those laws. It's the same as it was, but it's been reworded, and as part of the rewording, there was a question about whether we had changed where leashes are required in town and where they're accepted, and the answer is no. So.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Amy Oaks, 18 Jewett Street. Again, on behalf of the School Committee, one of the most beloved members of the school community is Luna, the dog. We want to be sure that Luna is allowed under this bylaw to continue to come to our schools. Thank you.
One moment, Mr. Arsenean. Anyone else wish to discuss this? Yes, sir. Dr. Wedmore?
Perhaps, Wedmore, 155 South Street. Perhaps it's a point of clarification, but in Section B, and if you would allow me to read, when on public ways and other public properties, including but not limited to parks, recreation areas, and school grounds...
Dr. Wedmore, it may just be me, I'm just not with you. Which page? I know it's Section B.
Okay, this is page 72.
Okay.
Section 4.
Yep.
Paragraph B.
The large B. Got it? Right in the middle of the page. Okay, it starts "as used," and where are you?
Second sentence. When on public ways and other public property, including but not limited to parks, recreational areas, and school grounds, when permitted, dog shall be on a leash or, except in the downtown district of Rockport, under direct voice control. Is that backwards? As I recall, in '99, there was a leash law put in place that required dogs in the downtown area to be on a leash.
And the way I word it, and I'm going to turn to the Government and Bylaw Committee, is that is still true under this. What it's saying is that if you're not in the downtown district, the dog either needs to be on a leash or under direct voice control, but in the downtown district, would have to be on a leash. Did I get that correct? Ms. Kaiser, yes. Ms. Willis, yes. So in other words, under this bold language, a dog in the downtown district would still need to be on a leash.
But is that what it says?
It does. Here's how it says. Dogs shall be on a leash or, except in the downtown district of Rockport, under direct voice control. So in the downtown district, direct voice control is not an option. Do I have that right?
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Dr. Wedmore. Returning to the motion under, oh, yes, and to clarify the question about the school grounds. Ms. Goldberg?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. In my opinion, a dog that is owned by or used by the school and police department as a comfort dog or a support dog, that would be sufficient. Under this bylaw, it would comply with the bylaw.
Thank you, Counsel. That seems to reassure the School Committee. All right, I'm going to get to you, anybody other than Mr. Arsenean. Seeing no takers, Mr. Arsenean?
Thank you.
Did I miss somebody? Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, Mr. Arsenean, for one moment. You can stay right there. Yes, sir?
Hi, Adrian Delphorch, 32 Smith Road. I have a question regarding the deletion of the nuisance at the very beginning.
Okay, and so we can all get with you? You are where, on page 71?
Yes, page 71, Section 2, the last section that's been crossed out.
That's being taken out, and the bold language is going in, which starts, well, that's already there, "no person owning, harboring, etc." And then you can see the bold insertion, which says, "a nuisance or dangerous dog."
Right. And at the end of that, what's been deleted, I think, to define nuisance dog is, cause of public disturbance, nuisance may include but not limited to repeated noises like barking forever? Is that now somewhere else in the bylaw? Or we allow dogs to bark incessantly?
So, I believe the answer to that is no. Counsel?
Mr. Moderator, through you. The General Laws were revised to make significant changes with respect to nuisance and dangerous dogs, rather than define it here in the bylaw in a way that could be interpreted as being inconsistent. Essentially, this is bringing that definition right into the bylaw.
That doesn't answer my question.
So I don't want to blow past you. What specifically is your question?
Definition of nuisance.
All right, as defined in the General Laws of the Commonwealth.
Yes.
So we're relying on that, and it may or may not be barking.
If you give me one moment, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Why don't you take a look at that? We're going to see if we can get an answer for you of that, sir. So we're not going to go past that. Anyone else, before we go to Mr. Arsenean? Thank you. Yes, ma'am, over here, mic runner.
Jane Tootine, 8 Penrun Way. And this is in response to the question, the clarification that was just brought up. I had the same question, and what it seems is, is we now have to go to the state law, Chapter 40, and those sections, in order to see what the definition of nuisance is. So instead of making it easy for a town person to read what the definition is of dangerous, we actually have to go to another site and see that. And I do think that's going to make it difficult for people who aren't online all the time. So I would consider, like, why don't we keep what the definition was in there, and we can still refer to the state one? But to make people go to the state to understand what it means doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay. I think what you're going to hear is that the effort is to make our bylaws consistent with the Commonwealth, but we'll see if we can clarify that more. Yeah? Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. So, as I said, the laws relative to dangerous and nuisance dogs were revised substantially. A dangerous dog is referred to, is defined as a dog that, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, or behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. The term aggress, attack is defined as an aggressive physical contact initiated by an animal, and if you just wait one more second. A nuisance dog is a dog that's defined that by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person residing in the vicinity, or causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find that such behavior is disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or that has threatened or attacked livestock. So it's a very comprehensive definition. At some point, the bylaws will include live links to the relevant sections of the general laws, but I'm sure that in addition, the town can put on its regular town clerk page, I'm speaking now for the town clerk, I'm sure she loves that, that, that is a direct link to the general law, so that that can be found very easily. It is difficult to enforce these laws, these bylaws on a case-by-case basis when they're inconsistent with state law, and that is why the state law was totally revised to address all of these things globally.
Mr. Arsenian?
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street, quoting, starting in the middle of paragraph B.
Are you on page, are you on page 72? You on page 72?
Yes.
Okay.
When on public ways and other public property, including but not limited to parks, recreation areas, and school grounds, when permitted, dog shall be on a leash, or, except in the downtown district of Rockport, under direct voice control. But not limited to means the watersheds, the woods, where you would like to take your dog, to let the dog loose. Better for the dog to be loose, and better for you as well, not to be dragged and attached. And indeed, you have the dog under direct voice control, or so you hope, until the dog sees a squirrel and the dog takes off, and now you and the dog are both criminals. I think it's authoritarian and mean spirited, it's there already, Lori Kaiser assures me we're not changing it. So what we have already, I think, is, is unfortunate, defective, unpleasant, and here we are asked to affirm it and, and continue it. I'll vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. Anyone else? Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, Rick Caston, 31 High Street. Going back to page 71, on nuisance and, section two, nuisance and dangerous dogs, the state definition, I didn't think included, but one of the things that says chasing, and what we're striking out is chasing vehicles and trespassing on private property or damage to other people's property. So if a neighbor dog is coming into your property and digging, or uprooting your garden, or whatever, is that still considered a nuisance dog, or not?
All right, thank you, Mr. Caston, sorry, and I'll see if we can get an answer on that.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, go ahead, let me just check to see if there's anyone else, maybe we can tee it up if there's more. Any, any further discussion, we're going to get back to Mr. Caston's question. Any further, further discussion? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Lawton?
Monica Lawton, 11 Story Street. In response to Toby's concern, my reading of section B, section four B on page 72, is that dogs, when on public ways and other public properties, including the parks, recreation areas, and school grounds, and the woods by implication, dogs shall be on a leash or under direct voice control. So they can be there, I, I, that's my understanding, am I incorrect?
As far as I can tell, you are correct, that's my understanding as well.
Thank you.
Uh. Goldberg.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you through you. With respect to the question of whether a dog that has, is doing excessive digging would be problematic, a nuisance dog is defined to include a dog that by excessive barking, causing damage, or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment. So in my opinion, that would prohibit a dog from coming onto your grounds and digging. This would all be something that would need to be enforced under the bylaw.
All right, any further discussion? All right, I sense you're all dog tired. The question before you is whether to amend chapter 10, section B of the general bylaws relating to animal control as set forth on pages 71 to 75 of the voter's booklet. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That motion carries. On to Article L.
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves that the town approve Article L as printed in the voter booklet motion on page 76. The Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to amend chapter six, section two of the general bylaws relating to the Board of Health as set forth on page 76 of the voter's booklet. This requires a majority vote. Ms. Willis?
Susan Lilis, Board of Health, this is a new section that was added to the bylaws to include a description of the Board of Health, there had not previously been a description of the Board of Health. It provides details about the numbers of members and the length of their terms. It also references the state public law statute and the fact that in addition to the state and federal law, the Board of Health has powers and duties that are set forth in their rules and regulations. So if you're trying to figure out what the Board of Health was supposed to be doing, it is a lot of work, someone mentioned that, but at least they're all listed now. It was always true, but they weren't listed before.
Thank you, Ms. Lilis. Any further discussion? Hold on, let me just see if there's anyone else. Seeing no one, Mr. Arsenian?
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street, what it says here cannot possibly be what's intended. The Board of Health shall have those powers and duties granted by mass general law, chapter 111, and any other applicable federal and state law or code, the general bylaws, or Board of Health rules and regulations. So apparently, they can make up their own rules and regulations. We don't know what they are. They could do it at any public meeting, we don't know what we're agreeing to. That can't be intended. What it ought to say is Board of Health rules and regulations adopted pursuant to any of the previous laws or regulations. And we can't offer an amendment now, but I'm not against the Board of Health, they do a great deal of work and, you know, I mean, a benefit to all of us, but the wording is faulty.
I, I believe this is just a, a true statement of the law that governs boards of health and what their powers are, but if anyone else wants to address that from GBL or anyone else, that's fine. Any, any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. McCarthy?
Hi, Barb McCarthy, 105 Granite Street, and I'm the Chair of the Board of Health, and the, the regulations are both federal and state and local regulations, they are allowed, as well as enforcement duties are granted to the, each Board of Health. It's a very wide scope and authority that has not been defined clearly in the bylaws to this point. So to answer Toby's question, there are opportunities for local to develop a regulation that is only pertaining to the town, okay? We're allowed to do that, and to get voted on, and to come before the Board of Health, and to come before town meeting, and present that to all of you as a local Board of Health regulation, a new regulation. So there are opportunities to do that as well. So it's, it's pretty broad, we think that covers it.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator through you. I do want to just reiterate what the Chair of the Board of Health said, which is that state law gives the Board of Health exceptionally broad authority to promulgate rules and regulations concerning the matters within their jurisdiction, and whether that language appeared in the bylaws or not, that authority still exists. So, you know, I have no problem with it from a legal perspective.
Further discussion on the motion made under Article L? All right, seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is whether to amend chapter six, section two of the general bylaws relating to the Board of Health as set forth on page 76. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That motion carries on to a motion under Article M.
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves that the town approve the motion for Article M printed on page 77 of the voter's booklet. The Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to amend the general bylaws by repealing chapter five entitled personnel in its entirety, and amending chapter six, section two, as set forth on pages 76 to 77 of the voter's booklet. It requires a majority vote. Ms. Kaiser?
The, chapter five, the Personnel Board is a relic from the 1950s, when the Select Boards in small towns did not have professional help with personnel matters, and according to Town Council, it was only an advisory board to the Select Board. Since the town now has a town administrator and a human resource director that advised the board on these matters, this bylaw is obsolete. On advice of Town Council, no one has been appointed to this board since 2018, and Town Council recommends repeal of the bylaw. Under chapter six, section B two, is related to chapter five personnel, because it references the Personnel Board as the authority that removes building inspectors. It needs to be amended to delete this reference. As the Select Board has power to both appoint and remove building inspectors, no new authority needs to be referenced to replace this language. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. Any discussion? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question before you is whether to amend the general, but, did I miss somebody? Yes, sir.
Hi, Will Workman, 85 Main Street. I would just like to hear again what I think I heard from counsel that I find a little disturbing. If the current bylaws say that this board has to exist, then why have we simply not appointed one since 2018? That doesn't seem like it's an option that our town government should have, to sort of selectively ignore them. That's what it sounds like, but I, I'm asking for clarification, it doesn't sound right to me.
So, I, I believe that is a true statement, there have been no appointments since 2018, and that is why it's before you for repeal, so you can urge opposing repealing it, or urge repealing it. Do you want to speak to that, whether to vote yes or no?
What I urge is following the bylaws we have until we do write new ones.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Moderator through you. This, this board is advisory to the Select Board, so the board isn't compelled to rely on any advice that might be given, and so they're based on the concerns relative to personnel information, especially, you know, as, as that area of law gets more complex, makes it a risk to have a multi-member board that's dealing with that type of information.
Thank you, counsel, thank you, Mr. Workman. Any further discussion on the motion made relating to the Board of Health? I didn't mean to miss people in the, in the gallery, sorry. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. If you're not, somebody speak up. The question before you is whether to amend the general bylaws by repealing chapter five entitled personnel in its entirety, and amending chapter six, section two, as set forth on pages 76 to 77 of the voter's booklet. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That motion carries by a majority. On to Article N.
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves Article N motion printed on page 81 of the voter's booklet. Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to amend the general bylaws by repealing chapter nine entitled Harbors and Floats in its entirety, and inserting a new chapter nine entitled Harbors as set forth on pages 78 to 82 of the voter's booklet. This requires a majority vote. Ms. Kaiser?
This bylaw has been worked on for the past four years with the Harbor Masters, and been vetted with sections of it rewritten by Town Council to create a concise and workable bylaw. There were, were numerous government and bylaw, public meetings discussing the bylaw before government and bylaw adopted the final draft. The reason for the repeal is that the current bylaw is actually a codification of previously written regulations of the Harbor Master from 30 years ago, and not a properly written bylaw. As government and bylaw continually emphasizes during this process to update the entire code of bylaws, regulations are meant to flesh out and make bylaws operational. Bylaws should not include excessive detail. This is important because operating detail, operating details change due to circumstances, and regulations can keep up with these changes, while the town meeting process is not designed to do that. Instead, there are additional harbor regulations that postdate the current bylaw, so the current bylaw has been out of date for years. The major changes proposed are that five pages of regulations that, which still exist in a separate document entitled Rockport Harbor Regulations, but were, but were also incorporated into the current bylaw, were removed from the bylaw. The new bylaw instead cites to the state law that empowers the Harbor Master and determines the actual duties of the Harbor Master. The bylaw goes further to specifically require the Harbor Master to make regulations to implement these powers. So a future Harbor Master cannot just decide to revoke all the current existing regulations and rule by whim. Regulations are required. It creates a new public process by which the new proposed regulations will be posted online and on the town bulletin board, two weeks before a public hearing they're on, something that has not, was not required by the statute, nor by the current bylaw, but will ensure due process and transparency going forward. Other improvements, a probation, a probationary, sorry, a probationary period is created for any new Harbor Master that would be, that would allow the Harbor Master to be removed without statutory cause. This was suggested by the current Harbor Masters as an opportunity to make sure that a new Harbor Master was a good fit. Otherwise, the changes are adding a definition of float and referencing all four major harbors and other coves, et cetera, that, that are regulated by Harbor Masters by state law, and that did not appear in the current bylaw. And finally, the section on livery boat service was rewritten to cite to the state law requirements generally, and emphasizes that the Harbor Masters can make additional regulations as they deem necessary. This was done to avoid a long laundry list of requirements in the bylaw.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. Any discussion? Yes, sir? And we'll get a mic over to you.
Paul Bryant, 5 Row Avenue, just some clarification on page 79, right about in the middle, there is a definition for Rockport Harbors, and part of Rockport Harbors includes on the third line and coves, and just a little clarification, a little further down, section four, the mooring permit says that no person shall moor or anchor, or anchor, or set any mooring or afloat within the limits of the Rockport Harbor. So my understanding of what was just said there, that every time you put down an anchor anywhere in, any cove in Rockport, which covers most of our shoreline, that we would need an anchor. So if there was the 4th of July, every single boat that came up would need to have a mooring at that point, and anybody that fished or dropped an anchor anywhere in a cove would have to get a mooring permit, and that, I can't believe... in a cove would have to get a mooring permit, and that, I can't believe that was the intention.
It only takes about 50, 60 years to do that.
I'm sorry?
It only takes about 50 years to get the mooring permit.
Yeah, but that's, that's why we get to drop anchors and, uh, use our recreational boats.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Actually, it is intended to be, uh, just the harbors and, and certain coves that are regulated. So, uh, the Harbor Masters, I could technically could make you move if they wanted to, but in general, you know, it's their policy, it's, it's, there's also a bit of policy here. Um, and I think that when we go to future regulations, they're, they will flesh out this, um, as, as in regulations.
Yeah, wait for the mic so everybody can hear your remarks, okay?
Sorry. Par, par, Paul Bryant, Five Row Avenue. As it's written, uh, anytime you drop an anchor in any cove, you need to have a permit. And that seems, that, that's a, we, we have rights to anchor, and if you, that's a huge taking to take that away and say that. The, um, Harbor Masters do a fantastic job. I think that would be ridiculously overburdening with them that anybody that wanted to drop any anchor at any time in any cove had to contact them and try to get a mooring. And that's what this law states right now.
Okay. Well, it's not intended to state that. We're really, and that's why I say where regulations will, will flesh that out.
Then we need to make an amendment.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, we can't. I, I, I know it seems illogical, but with this many people, we can't...
Is it possible for me to make an amendment?
Hold, hold on. I'll, I'll get to that in a minute. But, uh, the language issue you've pointed out, uh, thank you for pointing that out. It actually is duplica, even though this is a new section, that language, I believe, and I'll defer to the GBL, is already in the current bylaw anyway as it stands now. So, if it's a problem, uh, it's gonna need to be addressed, but it already exists now. I just wanted to help, if that helps you at all.
Right.
All right, thank you, sir.
And actually, that's the point. It does already exist now, and I, I, what I think we will be doing, that's the ability of the Harbor Masters to regulate things going forward, and they can define that further because clearly they do not, you know, regulate everybody or demand that you, you put a Harbor, but they have the power under state law to do so.
Thank, uh, thank you, Ms. Kaiser. Uh, hold on one second. Anyone else before Mr. Arsenian? Seeing no one, Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Uh, right at the beginning, A, Appointment Removal. The Select Board shall appoint a Harbor Master or Co-Harbor Masters, parentheses Harbor Master, for an initial term of three years. Um, I'm told, uh, by Scott Story that that came out of state law, so clearly, we can't, um, you know, do anything about it, and I'm wasting my breath and your time talking about it. Uh, that's idiotic and contrary to the public interest. Uh, you appoint somebody new, and you'll probably know in six months and certainly in less than a year if they're competent or insufferable, and you're stuck with them for three years. Thank the state.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. Any further discussion on harbors and floats? Yes, sir. Sorry, Mr. Kaplan, I forgot already.
Uh, David Kaplan, 14 Drumland Road. On page 79, Section 4, it reads, "No person shall moor, anchor, set any mooring afloat within the limits of Rockport Harbors." So, it would seem that these restrictions apply only to the harbors, and in the one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph on the same page, it explicitly limits the term Rockport Harbors. So, it would seem to me that this limitation applies only to the harbors and not to other areas of Rockport.
I, I think the gentleman's point was that the definition includes coves, but we've already established that that exists in the current bylaws. I think I've correctly stated the situation. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Any further discussion? I don't want to miss anybody. I don't see anybody. I sense you're ready to vote. The question before you is whether to amend the general bylaws by replacing Chapter 9 entitled Harbors and Floats in its entirety and inserting a new Chapter 9 entitled Harbors as set forth on pages 78 to 82 of the voters' booklet. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That motion carries by a majority. On to Article O.
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves Article O motion printed on page 83 of the voters' booklet. Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
Oh, sorry. Uh, moved and seconded. The question is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 10A, Section 3, relating to firearms, set forth on pages 82 to 83 of the voters' booklet. This requires a majority vote.
Greg Fistad, member of the Government and Bylaw Committee. This is straightforward. Uh, it is about discharging firearms. The Attorney General flagged this bylaw as regulating hunting on private property. Since only the state and not the town may regulate hunting on private property, the bylaw has been corrected to remove reference to hunting on private property. That is the only change.
Uh, thank you, sir. Any discussion? Yes, sir. To my left, and we can get a mic down to you, I think.
Don Crane, Two Phillips Ave. Uh, just a point of clarification, and I can't tell whether this is an addition or, um, or, or simply as a highlighting, uh, the, the language. I don't think this is a problem because it's under the category of discharging firearms, but just to, just to be, just for clarification, um, bow hunting is permitted in Dogtown, and the way this reads is that no, no one shall hunt fire or discharge any firearms, which is a little broader wording, but just to clarify that hunting there refers only to discharging firearms or explosives and not to bow hunting.
I think that's a safe bet based on the context and the title and the rest of the language of the bylaw. Appreciate you bringing the, the potential ambiguity up, but I think that's, uh, crystal clear. And if Council thinks I'm wrong, they'll kick me and let me know, but I think I'm right on that one. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Kathleen O'Neill, 3A Smith Street Court. I raise in concern and also a question of clarification. When I see an issue of public safety that's, relates to firing or discharging any firearms or explosives, and then I see that the fine is not more than $50, which is the same fine that shows up for water restriction, which is the same as parking violations, my question is, are we limited to such a little deterrent as $50 in this town? I consider public safety much more of a concern and an issue than water restriction and parking violations, as significant as those are.
Uh, so, thank you. Uh, the motion in front of us, uh, actually goes to conforming the language with, uh, constitutional and state law. Uh, that may be a fair point for another day, but that's not really before us. It's, it's a change from 50 in words to 5-0 just because it was being, uh, altered or, or conformed, uh, but, uh, thank you for raising that. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question before you is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 10A, Section 3, relating to firearms, set forth, as set forth on pages 82 to 83 of the voters' booklet. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries by more than a majority. On to Article P.
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves Article P motion printed on page 85 of the voters' booklet. The Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Uh, moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 10, Section C, relating to water use restrictions as set forth on pages 83 to 86 of the voters' booklet. Ms. Lilis.
Article P, uh, referring to water use restrictions, uh, most of the changes in this bylaw are to improve grammar, clarity, and consistency with other bylaws. Uh, the purpose and severance clauses were removed, and I think you're seeing a pattern there. Uh, there are two primary substantive changes. Uh, the first is to Section 5, the public notice section, uh, which requires that any town water restrictions be posted on the town website and also in Town Hall, so on a bulletin board in Town Hall. Uh, the second change is to Section 8, changing the word shall to may. This allows, uh, the town, uh, the option of either going to court to enforce unpaid fines or choosing an alternative option for collecting the fine. But those, those are pretty minor, and, uh, mostly we're just rewriting it for clarity.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Lilis. Any discussion? Hold on for one moment. Seeing no other takers, Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Section 3, Declaration of State of Water Supply Conservation. The town, through its DPW commissioners, some things are crossed out, may declare a state of water supply conservation upon a determination by a majority vote of the DPW commissioners that a shortage of water exists and so forth. Um, I was at a, uh, meeting of the commissioners, um, maybe a year, a year and a half ago, where they voted, uh, the commissioners, there were then three of them, um, to allow the director to make that determination, not the commissioners. So, I think the commissioners should tell us whether that still stands, um, the authority delegated to the director, or whether, uh, with this wording, it's only they who are going to make the decision, and will the Government and Bylaw Committee also comment?
Uh, before we get there, my understanding is that they actually do not have the authority to delegate that under... Oh, they do, I'm sorry. Uh, so, I'm gonna leave that. Council, did you want to address that?
Sorry. Uh, Mr. Moderator through you. Uh, in my opinion, the Board of Water Commissioners have the ability to delegate that decision-making, and they are not required to make that determination themselves unless they want to.
Anybody from the DPW want to address that?
Um, Erin Battistelli, uh, 4 Mount Pleasant Street, and, uh, DPW Commissioner. Um, we felt that it was a more practical way to go forward, that, you know, in order for us to, um, make that declaration, we have to post a meeting, meet, and vote. So, we felt that the direct, that this authority with the director made sense at the time, and it still does.
Hold on for one second, and I will get back to you one more time on this one. Let's see if there's anyone else commenting on that first. All right, seeing no one. Oh, yeah, hold on, Mr. Arsenian, yes, sir.
Tom Tamlin, 34 King Street. Um, question to Town Council. Is your conclusion about the power to delegate based on implied powers, or is there an express provision for that kind of delegation?
Uh, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator through you. Um, that's implied, as they have the authority to make that, um, finding on their own. Also, there is, um, as I understand, and I just want to make sure I'm on the right track here, the state has the ability to make a, um, Declaration of Water Conservation, but it's up to each town to decide how they want to do that.
Uh, thank you, Council. Anyone else first? Seeing no one, Mr. Arsenian, you get one more up on this motion.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Again, wasting my breath, since state law, uh, preempts everything. I disagree strongly with what Erin Battistelli said about the, um, director, um, you know, having the ability, uh, to do it. Um, you know, water emergencies don't happen overnight. Uh, they build and so forth, and should be a matter of some consideration, uh, since, um, you know, all sorts of things, uh, you know, become much more difficult once they're, uh, declared, and, you know, it's not a choice. So, it doesn't happen overnight, um, and, uh, it should be the commissioners who do it. And what it says here is not the truth if, in fact, the power is delegated. Uh, again, you can thank state law.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. Anyone else on the motion pending? All right, seeing no one, I sense you're ready to vote. The question before you is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 10, Section C, relating to water use restrictions as set forth on pages 83 to 86 of the voters' booklet. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries by a majority. On to Article Q.
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves Article Q motion on page 86 in the voters' booklet. The Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Uh, moved and seconded. The question is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 14D, relating to water pollution, as set forth on page 86 of the voters' booklet. This requires a majority vote. Greg.
This, uh, is, this bylaw is located in water pollution, and it has to do with nude swimming. We thought maybe that was a misplacement, um, but we didn't really... So, we thought we would perhaps move that to prohibited acts. This is serious. Then we, we did a little research, and very few towns have this sort of bylaw as part of, uh, as, as part of their, their governing, uh, laws. Uh, so, what we, uh, propose is that we delete this entirely. As you know, there's been some talk about this in Nantucket. We read about that. There was a recent report in Nantucket that has loosened up this prohibition, and there have been very few people actually taken advantage of it. We spoke with Chief Horvath in his, uh, research, and he went back 20 years. It had never been, uh, violated to his knowledge and therefore never enforced. Uh, deletion does not mean endorsement. We just think this is superfluous, and there's criminal law that can be activated if it, there is such a violation.
Uh, thank you, sir. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question before you is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 14D, relating to water pollution, as set forth on page 86 of the voters' booklet. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, let's all go sneak up to Steel Derek then. Uh, that passed by more than a majority vote. On to Article R.
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves Article R motion printed on page 87 of the voters' booklet. Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 14E, Section 3, relating to topsoil, stone, and gravel removal. By repealing it in its entirety, it requires a majority vote.
Thank you. Uh, this is a fairly complicated, uh, proposal, uh, in front of you, and I'm going to read our text, which I think is, uh, clear, and I'll read it slowly. The repeal, we are advocating repealing this general bylaw. Uh, the repeal of the general bylaw is intended to eliminate the need for two permitting processes regarding earth removal. At the moment, both the Select Board has that authority and the Planning Board under the zoning bylaw. The general bylaw, which predates the zoning bylaw, requires that anyone seeking to remove any amount of earth from land in Rockport obtain a permit from the Select Board. The general bylaw also requires that the Select Board work with the Planning Board and seek its recommendation before issuing its permit. So, the general bylaw appeared first. Then the town adopted a zoning bylaw essentially addressing the same issue. The zoning bylaw set a minimum floor of 10,000 square feet or the removal of 300 cubic yards of material before a permit from the Planning Board was required. The Planning Board considers more... The Planning Board considers more comprehensive lists of factors than those of the general bylaw. For instance, the Planning Board must seek to minimize the negative impact on adjoining properties, protect public safety, protect the natural landscape and the town's resources, and make sure the use is harmonious with the area. Since the adoption of the zoning bylaw, the Select Board has always deferred to the recommendation and expertise of the Planning Board on the issue of earth removal. The zoning bylaw has become the de facto standard of the general bylaw. Hence, we advocate that the general bylaw be repealed because it serves no useful purpose.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, I sense you are ready to vote. The question is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 14E, Section 3, relating to topsoil, stone, and gravel removal. By repealing it in its — yes? Oh, yes, sir.
Do I need to stand up?
You can stay right where you are, but just state your name and address, please.
Darakol, 51 Pigeon Hill Street. Am I reading this correctly, that if you stick with the Planning Board, then someone can remove up to 300 cubic yards of material with no permit?
My understanding is that is correct, and I'm getting affirmative nods from the Government and Bylaw Committee.
Okay.
You want to speak to that?
I just think that that seems like somebody could be removing a fair amount of soil. I haven't figured out the depth, but a 10-by-100-foot area, I haven't done the calculations to know how deep they could go to reach 300 cubic yards, but they might. You know, that's quite a bit of disturbance without any kind of permit and without any guidelines about where they're doing that work.
All right. In practice, I think it's the Planning Board anyway, and we're going to turn to Mr. Shaw for the Planning Board.
I'm the chairman of the Planning Board. We now have a stormwater management bylaw, which says that any disturbance, including excavation of over 2,000 square feet, requires a permit from the Planning Board and mitigation and water control and review by a professional engineer. So that has really taken over many of the activities that are under 300 cubic feet of removal.
I think it said cubic yards.
Cubic yards, I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah. So, in other words, there's much more strict legislation on the books now than there was a year ago. But it's not in this soil removal bylaw. It's in a different section of the law. Make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. I see your hand, Mr. Arsenian. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Lawton?
Yes, Monica Lawton, 11th Story Street. I serve as chair of the Rockport Rights of Way Committee, and there have been a number of instances where the Rights of Way Committee has been consulted by the Select Board on instances where property owners have wished to make some alterations to town land abutting their property. And it may be town land that is part of a right of way, for example. And that has always gone through the Select Board, and the Rights of Way Committee has appreciated the opportunity to be heard, and sometimes we agree with it and sometimes we don't. But I would be very concerned to think that that kind of disturbance could take place with no oversight or need for permitting whatsoever. I think that would be completely wrong, and I would urge not support this on that basis.
Thank you, Ms. Lawton. Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I believe Jason Shaw misspoke. The threshold for the stormwater bylaw is not 2,000, but 2,500 square feet, and it's a very elaborate and expensive proposition. If you require — are required to hire a consultant, the estimated cost for that was $10,000. So it's really overkill on the one hand. All of that would be appropriate for a large development or perhaps a mega mansion. If you were going to build a house, it would not be appropriate. It would be a real burden. And under the 2,500 square feet, there's no protection at all, none. We have sections in the Code of Bylaws that say you can't channel water out into streets, but there's nothing to prevent you from undertaking excavations or fill and channeling water onto your neighbor's property if you're not triggering the 2,500 square feet. So, you know, the Planning Board needs to get into the act and provide protection for property owners under the 2,500 square feet. And according to the Government and Bylaw Committee, contrary to what Monica Lawton fears, I don't know. I'm not sure. All of this will go forward just the same. Having knocked the Board of Selectmen out of the picture, the Planning Board will pick up the pieces and do the same thing. Whether that's true or not, I'm skeptical.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. And just to refocus the question, see if I get this right. Right now, the Select Board is not doing this. They are deferring to the Planning Board. What's before you is whether to repeal in entirety the bylaw relating to the Select Board, which is not being utilized. Do I have that right? All right. Any discussion on that question? All right, seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 14E, Section 3, relating to topsoil, stone, and gravel removal. By repealing it in its entirety, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That motion carries by a majority. On to Article S. Sir?
I'm not sure if I'm — Terry Rosolo, 4 Summit. I'm not sure if I'm doing this correctly, but I'd like to call the motion to Article U, so that we could move on. That we are now here for three hours, and the most substantive article hasn't even been addressed yet.
I don't — well, I appreciate that. I think people might have different views on what's more substantive.
I understand, but I'd like to call the motion. Can I — is that the right way to say it?
No, it's not. But I'll tell you what I will do. If you — I'm going to take it as a motion to take up Article U out of order. That is something that can be done.
Thank you.
Although you didn't have the floor, but I'm going to do it. It takes an 80 percent vote, so four-fifths of the people have to agree with you, and we're going to do it by electronic vote. It's not debatable.
Thank you.
So the question is whether to advance Article U out of order. Does everybody understand the question before you?
No.
Article Uniform. The voter wants to get to Article Uniform or U before doing anything else, which relates to zoning bylaw definitions. So what the voter's asking you to do is to stop the discussion now and go to Article U. That's what she's asked to do. It requires 80 percent of you to agree with that, to do it. If 80 percent of you agree, if 80 percent of you want to drop everything and go to U, we're going to do it. If less than 80 percent don't, we're going to continue on where we were. Does everybody understand the question?
No.
Sorry, let me try it this way. Is anybody confused on the question? All right. So the question is to drop what we're doing and go to Article U now. It requires 80 percent or four-fifths to pass. If you want to drop everything and just pick up Article U now, you will press 1 or A for yes. If you do not want to drop everything and pick up Article U now, you will press 2 or B for no. Voting now, 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 now. Forty-four percent in favor, 58 percent against, and the numerical count, 84 in favor, 105 against. So that motion fails. Did I get to Article R?
No. R is done.
We did vote on R. Okay. So on to Article S. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves Article S motion on page 88 in the voter booklet. Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 14E, Section 6, relating to exterior residential dwelling lighting. Compliance is set forth on pages 88 to 89 of the voter's booklet. It requires a majority vote. Greg.
This is a very simple issue. According to the Attorney General, building permits may not be denied to enforce a local bylaw. Therefore, the words "building permits" have been struck from the bylaw. It will still be enforced, it just may not be enforced via building permits.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hang on, Mr. Arsenian, I see you. Anyone else? I don't see anyone else. Mr. Arsenian. We're on S.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. The building inspector shall enforce this bylaw through complaint resolution or other means under the Inspection Services Department policies. What is complaint resolution, and what are other means? Do we send out posses, or what? Does the building inspector have the ability to issue fines? Are there fines in the bylaw? So how is this actually going to work? I understand we have to get rid of the building permits. The state is dictating that, too. But what are we left with?
All right, thank you, Mr. Arsenian. I don't think that's being changed on this one. Any further discussion on S, on the motion under S? All right, seeing none, the question — sir? Somebody speak?
Yes, no answer.
Okay. I don't believe that's being amended, right? That's not actually the question before everybody right now. But thank you. The question is on whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 14E, Section 6, relating to exterior residential dwelling lighting. Compliance is set forth on 88 to 89 of the voter's booklet. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That motion carries by a majority. Now on to a motion under Article T.
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves Article T motion on page 89 of the voter's booklet. Select Board and Government and Bylaw Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 15, relating to repeal, transition, and severability, as set forth on pages 88 to 89 of the voter's booklet. Ms. Lillis.
The only changes in this bylaw are about legal language. Sections 1, 2, and 5 were dropped as unnecessary legal boilerplate. Sections 3 and 4 were retained as still useful and applicable to the entire Code of Bylaws. So just legal language, cleaning it up.
Thank you, Ms. Lillis. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, I sense you are ready to vote. The question is whether to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 15, relating to repeal, transition, and severability, per pages 88 to 89. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries, and it is unanimous. I believe we now have to pull. We now have to pull an article.
And? Nope. It's Z, sorry. I'm on 3, and? Z, Z then.
Article Z. So we'll do Y then Z, Yankee then Z. So, Mr. Viera, a motion under Article Y.
Mr. Moderator, Select Board Member Dwight Valentine moves Article Y motion on page 99 in the voter's booklet. The Select Board and the Finance Committee recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to approve and confirm the following sums to be used to fund labor costs relating to AFSCME Council 93, Local 1679, $46,483 appropriated at the April 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting, $22,526 from the Sewer Enterprise Labor Reserve Account, and $46,675 from the Water Enterprise Labor Reserve Account, as set forth on page 99 of the voter's booklet. It requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, I sense you are ready to vote. Again, the question is whether to approve the sums that I've stated. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries by a majority vote. On to Article Z.
Mr. Moderator, Select Board Member Dwight Valentine moves Article Z motion printed on page 100 in the voter's booklet. Select Board and Finance Committee recommend.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to approve and confirm the following sums to be used to fund labor costs relating to the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, Local 154, $98,335.45 appropriated at the April 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting. It requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The motion again is to whether to confirm the sums I've stated. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Majority or unanimous? Majority or unanimous?
Was there a no? Oh, it was unanimous. So we are on to —
I'm picking another one. V.
What is it?
V.
V. Article V. So we will now go to U or Uniform, V, W, and X. Mr. Viera, a motion under Article U.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves Article U motion printed on page 93 of the voter's booklet. Select Board and Planning Board recommend.
Seconded.
So the question is whether to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 2, adding definitions as set forth on page 92. However, before we get there, just to avoid any confusion, in your voters' booklets — I don't want to confuse this, I just want to make sure if someone was looking at the warrant, they might not understand it. In your voters' booklets, in the warrant, not in the portion that has where the motion is and recommendations, but just so everyone understands, in the warrant on page 43, there is a definition for thoroughfare. That is not part of the motion. So it's in the warrant, but it's not being made as part of the motion. It's been taken out. Anybody confused about that?
What?
All right. So if you look at the motion in the — yes?
Also printed on page 92.
No. No. If you — so, all right. If you turn in the voter's booklet to page 43, 43. If everyone turns to 43 for a minute?
Aye.
Okay. That's the warrant. And the second paragraph, it's about two lines, starts with the word thoroughfare. Do you see that?
Yeah.
All right. That portion of the warrant is been removed. It's not being made as part of the motion. So the actual motion offering definitions, which is contained on the actual motion, if you look at page 92.
43, yeah, thoroughfare. Main Road.
Ah, so it is still there. My understanding is it's going to be taken out. So, I'll say it this way. It's — yeah, right. But it's not being advanced by the motion. So you can take that out. You can line it out. I'm saying it — right now, I'm restating the motion. We're not even putting whether you have to take that out in front of you. The motion in front of you does not include that definition. So you can take a line and line out thoroughfare. It's not being advanced by the Planning Board. So it is the same in the motion. My understanding is it was not going to be in the written motion in the booklet. It's not being advanced. All right. Have I muddied that enough? Is anybody confused on what I've just said? Yes, ma'am. You want a mic? Can we get a mic? Hold on.
Claire Harper, 24 Hyattview Road. Why are you taking out this?
So I'll let the Planning Board address that when they address the main motion. Thank you for asking that, and I'm sure it's going to be part of the remarks. But just as far as everyone knows, the motion, so everyone understands, the motion being made in front of you does not include the definition of thoroughfare. We don't need to address that.
I'm going to try to get through this as quickly as possible. My name's Jason Shaw. I'm the chairman of the planning board. And we, just to preface this, within the last six months, the planning board has been able to hire a planner, a planner consultant. She's fantastic. She's got twenty years of experience doing planning work for many of the communities in the North Shore. She's been immensely helpful to us as a board because these are things we would have to do on our own before, and it was very time-consuming. But anyway, many of the things that you're seeing here now are as a result of her work. Obviously, we endorsed it. And several of the things that you see, the adding of several definitions, childcare, group homes, sign, and transitional housing, these were all definitions that were recommended by our planner. And she's got tremendous resources. She looks at other communities, see what their definitions are. But for three of these definitions, childcare, group homes, and transitional housing, these are all pulled from state law. These are not definitions that anyone made up. And we're required, as a community, have uses, childcare, group homes, and transitional homes in the town of Rockport, and they're allowed everywhere in the town of Rockport. That's state law. And just very briefly, childcare center, everyone knows what that is. Group home is a home where group, usually adults who have, maybe have some developmental difficulties, live in a home, a supervised home, live together. And a transitional home or transitional housing is housing for someone who may have been the victim of domestic violence or something like that, recovering from a drug dependency. And it's a house that where they transition to becoming, you know, basically get away from their problem and transition to having a normal life. Those are all required. Sign definition is, it's in your booklet. I'm not going to read it. It's because we didn't have a definition in the zoning law for what a sign is. We now have that definition. So that's what we've done here. There are a couple of zoning, other zoning amendments. And by the way, the stormwater management threshold is two thousand square, is two thousand square feet. So if anybody wants to look that up for themselves, they can do that, not two thousand five hundred. So that's pretty much it on this. There's really not much more to say. If there are any questions, I hope I can answer them. But these are pretty straightforward definitions that we hope that you will approve.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Discussion on the motion under Article U. Hold on for one sec. Anyone else? No. Seeing none, Mr. Arsenean, the motion under Article U.
I eat humble pie and apologize for misinforming you on the threshold. I can tell you why thoroughfare came out, but maybe I shouldn't. It's still there in the zoning code, unfortunately, in the transportation, village-oriented development and the McMod. In the first, it's there under twelve E, the definition of lots, and under the McMod, thirteen D, the definition for lots. And it needs to come out. And we should not be approving sign because both the planning board and the Government and Bylaw Committee have agreed that they would sit down with the Board of Selectmen, who've not yet said yes or no, and the building inspector, and discuss the sign ordinances. Signs are in the would-be, if we approved this, in the zoning bylaw. And they're also in the general bylaw. And instead of covering the field and everything, they conflict, and things fall between the cracks. And then there are jokers wild, the Board of Selectmen's regulations, they can grant permits for signs on roads, which are not zoned. And they've all agreed to sit down and come up with something that makes sense. So it does not make sense to vote for sign here. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. Anyone else on the motion under Article Uniform? All right, Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, the Select Board has supported this article, which includes the sign definition. It's the first time we've had it defined. There is a provision in the bylaw, our zoning bylaw, that talks about signs, and talks about signs being prohibited if they're not related to a particular property. But we never define what sign is. And again, our planning consultant did a lot of research, came up with a very good definition of what a sign is, and it's appropriate to have it in our bylaw. So there's never a question in the future about whether something is a sign or whether it's not a sign. And as far as thoroughfare goes, I think someone wanted to know why it was taken out. Yeah, it was taken out because it needed more work. We need to, we needed more work to define that, but it's only used in, that word is only used actually in one provision in the zoning, in the transportation-oriented overlay district. That's the only place it exists. And I think we're going to have the time to come up with a stronger definition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any further discussion on Uniform? The motion under Article Uniform. All right. Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The question is whether to amend the zoning bylaw, Section two, adding definitions as set forth on page ninety-two with the deletion of the definition of thoroughfare. This requires a two-thirds vote. If it's too close to call, I'm going to go to electronic voting, but let's see if it is. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. That passes by more than two-thirds. Onto Victor, a motion under Article Victor.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves Article V motion printed on page ninety-three in the voter booklet. Select Board and Planning Board recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to amend the zoning bylaw, Section five, entitled permitted uses in zoning districts, to allow for new uses as set forth on page ninety-three of the voters booklet. This requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. Shaw.
This is a, essentially, a follow-up to what we just talked about with the definitions of group home, transitional home, and childcare. This article specifically allows, as I've already mentioned, each one of those in all the zoning districts in the town. So this basically takes those definitions, and as you can see up there, puts them in the table of uses and makes them permitted uses, as is required by state law. That's all this does. Pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on Victor? Yes, sir. And then we'll get to you, ma'am.
Hi. Corey Spence, one thirty-nine Main Street. What does SRAA and SR and all those other things at the top of the table mean?
Thank you. We'll get an answer from Mr. Shaw on that. Let's tee up another voter and see if we can hit two out of the, two at the same time. Yes, ma'am.
Jane Tutteen, eight Penrin Way. My question is somewhat similar. I looked up what those bet, and those are single-residence districts. And if you look at what the definition is, it's single-family homes and some of those. So I'm questioning, how can we have group homes? How can we have some of these new facilities in single-family districts and other districts that are already saying, you can't do stuff like that? So that's, that's what I don't understand, is how can we do it without adjusting the...
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Let's see if we can run those two issues by the planning board. Mr. Shaw.
All right. First question, first question is, what are all those letters at the top of the screen? What do they mean? Those are the shorthand for all the zoning districts in the town of Rockport. And basically, you go from the left-hand side, SRAA, single-family residential, double-A and single-family residential, and you go, that is the most restrictive area with the biggest land requirement. And then you go from there, going over to the left, to the right, you get to the, on the other end of the spectrum, you get to the downtown district, which is the very concentrated land use that's in the downtown area of Bear Skin Neck and in the immediate downtown area. I'm not going to go through all of them, but you get the picture. It goes from the most restrictive, essentially, to the least restrictive. That's how that works. In terms of how, why those are allowed in single-family residential areas, it's because the Commonwealth has made a determination that these three uses are sufficiently important for every community, so they can't be zoned out. They have to be allowed in every community, in every zoning district. That's not Rockport's decision. That's the decision of the state. And that's why we've included them in the zoning. And frankly, even if we hadn't included them, they'd still be allowed. But we've made an attempt to conform our zoning to the state law, and that's why they're there.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any further discussion on Victor? All right. Same process. I sense you're ready to vote. It requires two-thirds. If it is at all close, I will go to electronic voting. The question is whether to amend the zoning bylaw, Section five, entitled permitted uses in zoning districts, as set forth on page ninety-three of the voters booklet. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries by more than two-thirds. Onto a motion under Article Whiskey. As good as that sounds, it's not going to be as good as you might think.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves Article W motion on page ninety-seven in the voters booklet. Select Board and Planning Board recommend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to amend the zoning bylaw, Section five, entitled permitted uses in zoning districts, prohibiting in the downtown district, one, conversion of first-floor commercial space to residential uses, and two, conversion of professional home office space to residential uses without a special permit, and adding in new Section five D, entitled non-conversion from first floor, retain and related uses to residential as set forth on pages ninety-four to ninety-seven. This requires a two-thirds vote. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Harry Korsland. I live at two Green Street, and I'm a member of the planning board. Could we actually move ahead to slide six? This is the area of town that this zoning article refers to. Simply stated, Article W, if approved, seeks to preserve the existing commercial uses within the downtown zoning district. This article does not impact or seek to change any other zoning district within the town. Where is it happening? It's happening right there in that area that's shaded red. That's the downtown zoning district. The downtown zoning district, the downtown area of Rockport comprised principally of Main Street, Dock Square, T-Warf, and Bear Skin Neck, but also encompassing Broadway. Why are we interested in this? Go back to slide five, please.
Can we have it on both screens?
No. I can't. Or different...
It cannot. Sorry, I guess that's not possible.
Apologize, that technically apparently is not in the cards. So thank you for asking, but it's not something that can be accomplished right now.
The threat to commercial uses has been recognized by the planning board for a number of years, with recent conversions of previously commercial uses to residential uses. This trend, if not properly addressed, represents an existential risk to remaining commercial users in the areas and neighborhoods that we're seeking to protect. Existing zoning does not expressly prohibit conversion of commercial uses to residential use, as the zoning law currently is written. The risk to existing businesses with a downtown zoning district is significant. Furthermore, future business owners may not be motivated to consider Rockport to locate their restaurant, their inn, or the gallery in Rockport if the zoning is not supportive of commercial use. Zoning is an effective tool to mitigate the unintended consequences of residential conversions. Who does this impact? It impacts all of us. If we do nothing, those affected are all of the existing residents of Rockport and all future tourists visiting our town. Tourists bring with them valuable dollars that are spent at our restaurants, our inns, and the shops and galleries that Rockport is well-known for. Tourists that visit Rockport are either of the day-trip variety, arriving by passenger vehicle or train, or the extended variety represented by people visiting from other parts of the U.S. or internationally. Without a vibrant business community, Rockport will not be the Rockport that we all have come to know and enjoy. Article W of the 2025 Fall Town Warrant creates additional language to preserve the commercial uses of the first floor of addresses within the downtown zoning district. Furthermore, conversion of home office uses may be allowed through application for a special permit. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. It's up, if you're talking about the map, if anybody wants to reposition, we're pretty open down here if anybody wants to move and take a look at the map, and we'll leave it up there for the remainder of the discussion. Further discussion? Mr. Ugoney.
Hi. Jim Ugoney, thirty-three Main Street, and owner of a dog that by all rights should be in jail.
He's a nuisance, Mr. Ugoney. He's a nuisance.
Especially if you're holding a donut. I am in support of this bylaw change as it relates to the conversion of storefronts to residential occupancy, Airbnb homes, condos, in the Bear Skin Neck area. I have great concerns, however, how this law was written, and sad to say, it feels sloppy. I watched the rerun of the Zoom meeting, and I found that even in tonight, Mr. Korsland's presentation talks about the impact, but he speaks little about the impact to the existing property owners who own property downtown. But whether it's significant or not, it should at least be discussed. And that impact, of the value of their home, these need to be carefully crafted considerations when we're dealing with people's property rights, what they can and can't do with the inside of their house. So for example, under the consisting, the way it's written, under the design considerations, it's talking about limiting the access to the residential area of a home to twenty-five percent of the front facade. Well, that flies directly in the face of what the efforts of the Historic Commission are charged to do. It doesn't seem like any of this was written with these two competing interests that we have in town to say that, and who's, you're going to put these two committees at odds, never mind the enforcement of this stuff. And furthermore, what happens when you have a condo building like mine that may have something in the condo agreement? And I'll preface by saying, I don't own a Airbnb, and I don't own a store. But I look at this to say, this is, whenever you're messing with people's property rights, and for those of you who own buildings outside of the district, think about what would happen if the government, albeit local, came in and told you what you can and can't do with the inside of your home. These are economic cycles we live in right now where Airbnb is prominent, yet we're going to make some kind of determination over what affects the value of people's homes. And I understand from Dock Square through the rest of that red area, I can only find one space on Main Street, and I don't count Toad Hall conversion as one of them, that's going on right now. And we don't have any discussion about the limitations of what the role of the zoning board is when they're required to seek a special permit. board is, when they're required to seek a special permit in the conversion of the building and be required to carry the one-and-a-half parking areas, spaces. So there's a lot of stuff on here. This is a significant, significant rule change that I think should be approached carefully. I'm not saying we shouldn't even do it, but Bear Skin Neck, it's understandable. People are fearful of stores being lost to Airbnb. I get it. I'm still not fond of it, but I understand it. But the rest of town, boy, I urge people to be very, very cautious passing this rule as it stands, and somebody should amend it so it's just Bear Skin Neck that we want to start with, if any at all.
Thank you, Mr. Ugoni. Any further discussion? And I see you, Mr. Arsenean. Anyone else want to discuss the, what? Where? Am I missing someone? Yes, ma'am.
Derek Cole, 51 Pigeon Hill Street. Am I to understand that, so it's all of the red area on the map, not just along the Main Street that is included in this amendment or this change?
The area that you see in the map, the red, also bordered by yellow. The yellow area is town-owned property, but it's the red area that we're talking about. That's the D district, the downtown zoning district.
Okay. And does it apply at all to existing residences that are within that district?
Well, there are quite a few existing, pre-existing residences that are not on the, what I refer to as the main Bear Skin Neck corridor. They're set back. They're off. I don't want to confuse you, but the most recent example we had was an Airbnb conversion of a space on Tuna Wharf.
And so my question is, for buildings within that zone that currently are residences with first-floor access and first-floor living, and that would not be converting but are already existing as residences, does this apply?
Those are protected.
Pardon?
Those are protected.
Thank you. That was my question.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Korsland. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am. Over here to my right.
Susan Lynn, 66 Bear Skin Neck. I also have a business at 79 Main Street, and to Jim's point, it's not just Bear Skin Neck that this is a problem. I am, I am the last shop on Main Street, and I can tell you over the last couple of years, when there have been empty storefronts, my business is affected just by the lack of foot traffic. That needs to be a continuous string of businesses to make all of the businesses thrive. Those storefronts can't be chopped up here and there, just one chop every half a block. It ruins businesses. So this is necessary for the whole downtown area. It has to be consistently businesses.
Thank you, ma'am. Did I see any other hands over here? Yes, sir. Right behind you. Thank you.
Hi, Rusty Kidman, 50 Granite Street. My wife and I own Rusty Ingrid's Greenprints down on Dock Square. We have moved our, moved our business here in 2017, and I guess what I would say is that the downtown business area, in addition to being like a gem of tourism in, in the state, and people tell us that all the time, it's also a primary way that young families can come to the, to the town and, and find a way of making a living and, in a homegrown business. And, and we are an example of that. We moved to Rockport in 2017, and 2019, we were able to buy a home completely on the income that we were able to make having a business in the downtown area. And I fear that any loss of commercial space in the downtown area is going to negatively affect the ability for young families to come to town and raise their family. We have three kids in the Rockport School, and, and like I said, we own a home. We wouldn't be able to do that without the commercial space downtown, and we want to preserve that as much as possible.
Thank you, sir. Just hold on one second. Mr. Goodman, I see you. I see Mr. Arsenean. Anyone else? Where? Yes, ma'am. Right here.
He wanted to speak.
Oh, okay. Okay, where's Christine? Let's go to this, let's go to this lady first, and then.
Yvonne Leach, 27.
Thank you. And then we'll get to you, ma'am, and then Mr. Goodman, and then Mr. Arsenean. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yvonne Leach, 27 Mount Pleasant Street. I'm the last building in that red area on Mount Pleasant. And currently, the Hula Moon Restaurant is there, and they're leaving, they're retiring. Next door is the Blacksmith Shop, where there'll be a culinary arts school, restaurant. Further down is another restaurant, the Skiff, and just around the corner is another one. And when my tenants leave, it will leave my space open, and I don't believe that another restaurant could survive in that environment. I also am 72 years old and had hoped to move into that bottom space, which apparently will not be possible. I sincerely wonder whether the value of my property is going to plummet because I don't know who would rent. It's been a restaurant for so long, I don't know who else, I don't think a new restaurant could survive the competition in that area. So I think I'm in a unique position to find some other option, and what I had hoped was to make that residential, which is my issue anyway.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And then, right here? Right here, ma'am? Yep, to your, to your left.
Christina Wilcox, 24 R, King Street. I also own the building at 5 Bear Skin Neck, where we have Rockport Candle Company, and I wanted to hear from some of the other property owners in the affected area of the downtown district. So I walked around and talked to a lot of the other property owners. A lot of these people do have businesses in their building, some of them do not. Some of them own the building and rent out to other businesses. But I thought it was important to find out what people who own the building thought about this proposal, because they're the ones that will be affected, giving up their rights, for lack of a better word, to convert their first floor to residential. And all of the people on this clipboard, I didn't get to talk to everyone, I'm busy too, but everybody that I did speak to that's on this clipboard say yes, that they support this proposal, not necessarily because they have a business, but because they believe in the future of Rockport, and that they want Rockport to continue to be the way that it has been for, I don't even know how long. And they also care about the revenue that the town gets from businesses that are in this town. And if we, you know, give up businesses, we're giving up tourists. And I know what some of you are thinking, we can do without those tourists, can't we? And the fact of the matter is, I don't think we can. I don't think as a town that we can. We need that revenue. We don't have any other industry in this town. So if anybody wants to take a peek, I told everyone that was signing this that this is not an official document. I just wanted something to show you all, to show, show that the business, the property owners in this downtown district do support, a majority of them do support this initiative. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Goodman? You're good? Mr. Goodman's good? All right.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. Whether or not you support it, the wording is shoddy. The Planning Board told you that they were getting rid of purpose. Here it's called intent throughout the code of bylaws, but intent, ending with create a vibrant street life for neighbor safety, commercial activity, and community character. I call that pious nonsense. What is neighbor safety? And then, design requirements. Encourage and support pedestrian activity and so forth. Promote the glazing transparency parentheses windows. Encourage ground-floor doorways and so forth. Promote recessed doorways on buildings. All of that is shoddy language in zoning. Either you require something, or people can do as they please, okay? So that takes you nowhere. The response will be that it's by special permit, the conversions of, by the Planning Board. But that's not how you're supposed to write laws. You're supposed to know what you're going to get. So all of that, whether or not you want it, is a sorry affair. This is all being done to promote, as is said, the tourist industry, the notion that if there aren't enough, you know, a critical mass of stores, people won't come here. What if you own one of the little buildings and have a store downstairs, and you've tried and tried, and it's failed? What now? Or you've rented it out to a series of tenants. They've tried, they've failed. What now? The Planning Board says you're stuck with it. Rough luck. I believe in zoning, in limiting people's property rights. If you're doing it, it needs to be for some proper purpose, to protect the environment, to protect public safety, for the common good, okay? The Planning Board started out assuming that it was a good thing to promote the tourist industry. They made no calculations on what it does for the town, what it costs the town. It was an assumption right from the beginning. I say it's depriving people of their property rights to support a particular small group of people. I'll vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. Yes, sir. Over to my right. And I've got a, oh, no, well, we'll get to this gentleman and that gentleman.
John Cagiano, 66 Bear Skin Neck. Just a few tie-ins here. The, it was a wonderful presentation to my right. What wasn't mentioned is that all of these businesses, whether they be galleries, or restaurants, or other service businesses, provide jobs, and they provide jobs to a lot of our local kids and to other adults. And before there was anything about a Planning Board, it didn't exist when businesses started here. Again, it's through you, but I want to counter some misinformation. It is the lifeblood of a town, businesses. And there's no critical mass. You can't put a finger on it, but you know that that does attract the tourists and attracts a lot of money to us. So we're dependent upon it, and it's just, you don't need to have statistics, it's just obvious by looking around. Tourism has been the cornerstone of this town for 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cagiano. Mr. Chambers.
Joe Chambers, 108 Granite Street. I have a shop on Bear Skin Neck, been in multiple locations. So in 2018, I was laid off from a software job that I had worked at for nearly 20 years. The ability to open a store in Rockport was an economic opportunity for me. I first started working on Bear Skin Neck when I was 14, running a store. I didn't know that 30 years later I'd opened my own. That led me to further opportunities, and I currently own Sandy Bay Provisions. There is true economic opportunity in the shops downtown. If we let them go, it's a slow-rising tide now, but when the tide ebbs, there'll be nothing left. And I urge you to support this and move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Wait, Miss George? Miss George? Miss George? And do I see other hands out here for the, no? Okay, Miss George.
Just from being a local, I mean, think of all the shops downtown, if they converted to houses. Tux, that's a big building. Brothers Brew. John Taz. All of those, all the rest, the few restaurants that we have downtown, if those were all gone to houses and condos, where would we local shop? Where would we go? You know, I don't, yeah, yes, we're a tourist town, but we're a small, local town that needs those small businesses downtown.
Thank you, Ms. George. Further discussion? Hold on for one second, Mr. Ugoni, before we go back to you. Anybody else? You have a question?
I do.
Ms. Woodell?
Point of clarification, the special permit granting authority, number four, the Planning Board shall be the special permit granting authority for projects under this section. Would that be inclusive of somebody getting out of this provision and being allowed to have a residential on the first floor, or is that strictly prohibited? I'm sorry if I didn't understand that.
That provision relates only to home office uses within an existing residential space.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Korsland. Mr. Ugoni? Yes.
Denise Donnelly, 72 Pigeon Hill Street. I'd like to call the question.
Hold on for one second, because I had gone back to Mr. Ugoni before I did that. So, Mr. Ugoni.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I began my comments by saying I'm in support of this article or bylaw change, and I am. I would not let the first floor of my building, it requires a unanimous vote in the condo association, which means all of us, including me, would have to say we'd convert it to residence, and that would never happen. And I know many people, the majority of people also feel that way. We're all in the same community. I serve on committees with many of you, we're neighbors, et cetera. This is a property right issue. This is a good intention badly written. All I'm asking you to do is go back to the drawing board and present this back, perhaps in spring meeting, work on it that fast, to get in concert with the Historic Commission, to get in concert with the zoning board, determine the process by which this is going to be handled. And I look forward to having these restrictions, and there are, some towns have creative restrictions. They incentivize property owners to put deed restrictions on their own house. All those people that signed that, put a deed restriction on your house. That's really the only way to do it, without having a law tell you to do it. I'm not opposed to this. I think it's a great idea, and I'm, and I'm in support of it, but not the way it's currently written. And it's too much of an issue to loosely word this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ugoni. Ms. Donnelly?
Denise Donnelly, 72 Pigeon Hill Street. I'd like to call the question.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. The motion to move the previous question or end debate is moved and seconded and is in order. This is not a debatable motion. It requires a two-thirds vote to carry. If the motion, if the motion to end debate passes, we will then proceed immediately to voting on the underlying motion under the article relating to the downtown district and residential uses. If the motion to end debate fails, the floor will then immediately be reopened for further discussion on the main motion. We'll vote by electronic means. You'll have 12 seconds from when I say the words "vote now." You will press 1 or A for "I," if you support ending debate on the underlying motion. You will press 2 or B for "no," if you oppose ending debate on the underlying motion. Is anyone confused on what we're going to vote on? All right. All those in favor, press 1 or "I." All those opposed to ending debate, press 2 or B for "no." Ready? Vote now, 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 now. And that passes 83% to 17%, and the numerical count is 160 to 32. So debate is over. We now immediately will vote on the motion under Article W. So the question before you is whether to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 5, entitled Permitted Uses in Zoning Districts, prohibiting in the downtown district, one, conversion of first-floor commercial space to residential uses, and, two, conversion of professional home office space to residential uses without a special permit, and adding new Section 5D, entitled Non-Conversion, from first-floor retail and related uses, as set forth on 94 to 97, pages 94 to 97. This requires a two-thirds vote. We will use electronic means to vote. You will press 1 or A for "I," if you support the motion. You will press 2 or B for "no," if you oppose the motion. Is there, is anyone confused on what we're about to vote on? All right. All right. All those in favor will press 1 or A for "I." All those opposed will press 2 or B for "no." You will have 12 seconds, starting when the clock goes, and vote now, 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 now. And that motion carries 77% to 23%, and the numerical count is 150 to 44?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On to a motion under Article X-ray.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves Article X as shown on the screen.
All right.
Select Board and Planning Board, support. Again, please note the motion on the screen.
And I'm going to go through that in a moment. So the question before you is whether to amend the zoning bylaw, Section Roman numeral 8, entitled MBTA. Oh, I'm going to go through, I'm going to go through it in the fore. Oh, okay. You're going to do that?
Yeah, I need an updated slide.
Okay, they're going to update the slide. In the meantime, I'm going to state the motion, and I'll walk you through your books. I think it'll make it a little easier. So the motion is whether to amend the zoning bylaw, Section Roman numeral 8, entitled MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay Districts, relating to the schedule of area and dimensions set forth on pages 97 to 99 of the voters' booklet. And if you would, turn to page 97, please, with me. So turn to page 97. If everyone's on 97, let me know if you don't follow me. On 97, right in the middle, it has Article X. If you drop down under the bold print, there's a small letter A, and it reads "To Delete Section Roman numeral 8E#3," you are going to add in there "and 4." Do I have that right, Mr. Shaw?
Uh, yeah.
The words "and 4."
And 4, that. 13E3.
Roman numeral 8.
No, it's 13.
E. Number, it says hashtag 3.
What? You said A.
Yeah, there's a, there's a small A to the left. All right, look. All right, so there's a small A to the left.
Right.
If everyone's with me? And I'm going to read it. This is how it is being advanced by the planning board. Mr. Shaw, correct me if I don't state it right.
Okay.
Quote, small A, period, "To delete Section Roman numeral 8." Oh, I see what you're saying. I'm sorry. It's been a long day. I'm sorry. Right, Section 13E#3, inserting the words "and 4." Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, right. And then further, if you flip over to page 98, there's a footnote at the bottom. You can take a pen and you can X that out. That is not being advanced. Do I have that right, Mr. Shaw?
That is correct.
So those are the two changes to your voters' booklet for the motion as being made by the planning board. Mr. Shaw?
Right, okay. This is a tough one for 5 to 9, but I'll try. A little bit of fact, can we go to the next slide? Okay. Here we are. Last town meeting, I think it was, yes, spring of 2024, we had a significant zoning proposition to create zoning, overlay zoning that allowed for multifamily housing. That is up to 15 units per acre. And there was a lot of discussion, but the two different zones that were created, the, you want to go to the next slide, please? We approved the multifamily zoning in the area around the train station. Anybody who wasn't here at that meeting, this may be difficult. But we created an overlay zoning allowing for up to 15 dwelling units per acre. And we, in the town, approved two separate areas where this zoning was allowed. One was in the Transit Oriented Development Overlay District, or in shorthand, the TOVOD, which was immediately around the train station. The second was the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, which shorthand is referred to as the McMod. This was to the west of the train station. The two overlay zones totaled 53 acres. Next slide, please. Okay. We had to get approval from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities of these two zoning areas to show that we were in compliance with the state's requirements. And we did get approval by a letter in February of 2025. However, the state said, or the EOHLC said, that there was a little technical glitch in the McMod bylaw, because it didn't state clearly enough that the minimum lot size for multifamily housing in the McMod was 10,000 square feet. Everyone with me so far? It, it stated it, but it wasn't clear enough for them. So what are we attempting to do by this warrant article here, this X? We're amending the McMod and creating a schedule in the McMod that states very clearly that the 10,000 square foot, that 10,000 square feet is the minimum lot size for multifamily and townhouse units, and also for mixed-use units. That's all this does. It doesn't change the law. It doesn't interject anything new. It just clarifies what is already there, so it satisfies the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. They have given the town of Rockport a contingent approval of what we've done, which is, I think, is a tremendous achievement to get that from them. But they've said, "We want you to make this more clear." That's what this is. That's all it is. Okay, that's it. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Judy Spurr, 188 South Street. My question is, when you, as I looked at this, and then I looked at the footnote, didn't the planning board intend to be sure that there were going to be affordable housing in these developments?
That footnote should not have been there. That was repealed when the Affordable Housing bylaw was adopted. You were probably at the meeting. That footnote was repealed, and it was substituted by the Affordable Housing bylaw. So that's why the moderator, Mr. Sullivan, has said the footnote, the footnote should be ignored, because it's not there. It's, it's Xed out.
So it is not negating the fact?
It's not, it has nothing to do with what we're talking about today. That was, that was an item that should have been repealed and removed from the zoning, and it will be, but that has nothing to do with this, what we're just talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, ma'am. Hold on for one second, Mr. Arsenian. Anyone else? All right, Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. You notice it starts with a table, "Schedule of Area and Dimensions." There's nothing in there about the height of the buildings. And when we made the sorry mistake of approving first the TOVOD and then the McMod, the planning board notably didn't explain the particulars. They talked about the state's requirements, the number of units, the housing crisis, and so on and so forth. They did not tell you that you could end up with buildings 45 feet high with a bonus, which is not defined anywhere in the zoning code. So you could end up with a building 45 feet high, side and rear setbacks 10 feet off your property line. Now, most of us don't live in these zoning districts, but maybe you remember the golden rule. Would it be fit to do something like this to others if, if you wouldn't want it in your backyard? I wouldn't want it in my backyard. I didn't vote for either of the zoning districts, and wouldn't vote for this either.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. Any further discussion? Mr., we'll actually see if there's anything to tee up for you, Mr. Shaw, so we can try to handle things efficiently. Any other, any other issues or discussion on this before we go back to Mr. Shaw? Yes, Ms. Donnelly?
I just, Denise Donnelly, 72 Pigeon Hill Street. I just want to clarify that the maximum height in this district is 35 feet.
Thank you, Ms. Donnelly. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, this amendment has nothing to do with height. That's already in, baked into the bylaw. That's in there. And what Mr. Arsenian said was simply, flatly wrong. And he's been wrong twice. This is the second time it's not wrong.
Let's keep it on the, let's keep it on, let's keep it on the substance, please, not the personalities.
Sorry. You can't have 45-foot-high buildings in the McMod. It, the height requirement, it's the same height requirement that exists all over the town of Rockport now.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any further discussion? This will be your second up, so that's going to be it. If you get up again, just hang on. Is there anybody other than Mr. Arsenian that wishes to, wishes to address this motion? All right, seeing none, Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I'm wrong once, but not twice, and I will find it for you in the McMod.
Mr. Arsenian, we're going to vote up or down on the, on the motion. Is there anything else you want to say on that up or down vote?
It testifies all a terrible mistake, and we're glad it's not.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. We're going to move on. Ma'am?
I'm hoping to find.
No, we can't, we've got to move on, we've got to move on, we've got to move on. That's the second up. We've got to move on. Other voters need to speak. Yes, ma'am?
45 feet with a bonus.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. Yes, ma'am. All right, you just moved the question, then. All right, I'm going to see if I can do this by a show of hands. The motion to, is there a second? All right, the motion is to end debate. If you want to end debate, you want to vote "I." If you are, we're going to do hands. If you're against voting, against ending debate, you're going to vote in the negative. All those in favor of ending debate, raise your hands. All those opposed to ending debate, raise your hands. That passes by more than two-thirds, so debate is over. Now on to Article X. The question is whether to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 13, entitled MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, relating to the schedule of area and dimensions, as set forth on pages 97 to 99 of the voters' booklet. This requires a majority vote. Because of the McMod and TOVOD issue, all those in favor say "I."
Aye.
Opposed, say "no."
No.
That motion carries by more than a majority. I know you're going to be disappointed to hear, we only have three more articles, and we are moving on to Article A. Or a motion under Article A.
Mr. Moderator, Article A. Select Board Member Dwight Valentine moves a motion for Article A, printed on page 52 of the voter booklet. Select Board and Finance Committee approve, recommend this article.
Moved and seconded. The question before you is whether to appropriate and transfer the sums set forth on page 52 of the voters' booklet to pay unpaid bills and adjustments from prior fiscal years. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will put the vote to you. This requires a nine-tenths vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. That is unanimous, and it passes. On to Article B. Oh, I apologize. There was one no vote, but it's more than nine-tenths. On to Article B.
Mr. Moderator, Select Board Member Dwight Valentine moves Article B, motion printed on page 52 of the voter booklet. Select Board and Finance Committee recommend.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to amend the votes taken at the April 5, 2025 Annual Town Meeting under the cited articles by transferring the specified sums on page 53 of the voters' booklet. It requires a majority vote. Any discussion? Thank God, no. All those in favor say "I."
Aye.
Opposed, say "no." That passes by more than a majority. On to Article Double A.
Mr. Moderator, Select Board Member Dwight Valentine moves Article Double A, as printed in the motion on page 100 in the voters' booklet. Select Board recommends this article.
Moved and seconded. The question is whether to appropriate $400,000 relating to improvements to Highview Road and Briny Way, as set forth on page 100 of the voters' booklet. This requires a majority vote. Oh, that's two-thirds.
Is there a map?
I apologize. That requires a two-thirds vote. Yes. Mr. Viera?
So, Mr. Moderator, thank you through you. This article is authorizing the town to proceed with a borrowing in the amount of $400,000 in anticipation of the, except, town going through the acceptance process for Highview and Briny, Highview Road and Briny Way. The entire cost of this borrowing would be paid for through betterments. So what this does is allow the Department of Public Works and the Department of Public Works Commissioners to proceed forward with engaging with a contractor and going through the public way acceptance process with the Select Board and the Planning Board between now and April. The intention is, at that time, in April, to bring forward a request to publicly accept those two roads. Your, it is not before the body tonight to publicly accept these roads. This is the first step in a longer process, a several-month process. So tonight is simply authorizing the town to proceed with preparing this borrowing, which will be paid for fully by betterment assessed to the individuals that live on those two roads. There is not a cost to the town for authorizing these betterments. And again, it is not accepting the roads this evening. It is allowing us to start the process of the public acceptance, which includes hearings in front of the planning board and referrals from the Select Board and Public Works Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Viera. Is there any discussion? All right, Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I'm right on the 45 feet. I found it.
We, we, we got to stick to, hold on. We have to stick to the motion on the floor. We're not going back to prior motions. So let's address this motion.
I'm sorry. Does this commit us in any way? What if we decide at the next town meeting that we don't want to accept the roads? We're going to collect the $400,000 anyway, and what then? And I think before we're accepting roads, there ought to be proper standards. If they are, in fact, thoroughfares, a legitimate word, connect at either end with public roads, or if they connect with public rights of way, or if they connect with public property, it makes sense for the town to accept them. It's a good thing for the people who live on the roads, but we get to maintain the roads for good and ever. It's not good for all of us, the town collectively. There ought to be objective standards on which we decide whether we not, we want to accept roads. And at present, there are not.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian and Mr. Viera.
Mr. Moderator, through you. The $400,000, the betterment is not being assessed immediately on this. It would be assessed, and the work would commence on the roadway once the town, if the town chooses to go through, if the town chooses to vote to accept it at the next town meeting. This is allowing us to prepare and walk through the very detailed public acceptance process, including public hearings on it. And there are certainly processes and standards that need to be followed as it relates to the acceptance of public roadways. Council has provided materials for us to review and work with the planning board and the Public Works Commissioners on, on that particular topic.
Thank you, Mr. Viera. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Can we have a mic if we still have... Thank you.
Hi, Mary Zanetti, 15 Caleb's Lane. I just have a point of clarification. Given that we have a lot of conversation about the 91 private ways in town, I guess I wonder how these two were brought to this point this evening, and how others can perhaps, you know, follow suit.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if we get anybody who can address that.
Sure.
Mr. Viera, go ahead.
Through you, these two roads are brought forward because the neighbors engaged with the Public Works Department, and through the conversations that were had with these roads and several others, these two chose to proceed forward with going through the public acceptance process. Other roads chose to make individual repairs. Other roads chose not to do anything. These roads chose to go through this point in the process, and that's why we're here.
Thank you, Mr. Viera. Yes, ma'am.
Thanks so much. Sarah Wilkinson, 23 Highview Road. I see a lot of my neighbors tonight that are here. Thanks for putting up with my emails on this for the past year and for joining us here tonight. But basically, we got the letter that I think a lot of you just recently received a year ago, saying that our road wasn't up to acceptable standards. We then gathered as a neighborhood, and I'm saying this just to share because I think it's probably really helpful for a lot of people in this room. We gathered as a neighborhood. We had a little get-together in someone's yard. We kind of appointed a few of us to take the lead on this. We met with the DPW to meet and discuss acceptable standards. Last winter, we paid as a neighborhood to have the two roads patched privately, and then we got an email list server going, so we kind of share information. And then this year, we're taking the first steps towards... We did determine with the DPW that Highview and Briny, they are connected to public land. They are, they have, I think there are 41 properties total that abut them, and they're kind of main, I hate to use the word thoroughfare this late in the evening, but for lack of a better word, they are kind of mainish roads in town. But that's kind of where we got to where we are tonight. And just to reiterate, because several people called me today, this is no cost to the town at any point. It's basically the town borrowing the money and lending it to the neighborhood, which will be assessed over a certain amount of time that is yet to be determined on our property taxes. And I knew about this because this is the exact process we followed back in, I'm forgetting the year, maybe 2008, on Eden Road, sometime around then. But we are trying to do the exact same process. If anyone has questions, they're welcome to reach out to those of us in our neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. Yes, ma'am. You, and then you. This gentle lady right Geography's a little challenging.
Amy Seebin, 5 Row Avenue. Just a point of clarification. If we're voting to borrow money, and then what happens if the town does not approve taking the roads off of private? What happens? Are we out of, is the town out of money?
All right. Thank you. We'll see if we can get an answer on that. And I had another voter back here, I think, who was looking to speak. No? Did I miss it?
Yes.
Oh, right there. Yes, thank you.
I do. I just wanted to give you some time. Do you have a couple of questions? So, Mr. Moderator, through you, this is, again, is an authorization to borrow. We are not going forward with the borrowing as of right now. We are getting the authorization so we can begin the process to move forward. And again, the town is not on the hook itself for any funding here. This is paid for strictly through betterments assessed to those residents of the two roads.
Thank you, Mr. Viera. Yes, ma'am.
Claire Harper, 24 Highview Road. I looked at the Gloucester Town website. They have, you can look up a page explaining the betterment process, and I really encourage Rockport to add that to their website. I mean, I think the Rockport website's getting better and better all the time, but there's so much confusion about how the betterment process works. And I don't think it really answers the question just to say, well, you need to talk to the head of DPW, who's very hard to get a hold of, or the town administrator, who's very hard to get a hold of. I think if you could just make that clear. And also this question of what is a private road, what is a public road, what roads, what are the requirements? Like, there's got to be a list that you can say, okay, number of houses, length of road. Is it a matter of it connects at both ends? Like, this is a serious question that a lot of people with private roads are grappling with because they don't understand how they're supposed to proceed with these threatening letters about no longer going to maintain their road, no longer going to plow their road. So I just asked the town to really put some effort into clarifying that whole messy issue.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any further discussion? Did I hear someone say yes? Yes, ma'am.
I feel like I'm being asked to vote on something that...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Your name and address, ma'am. Sorry.
Diane Finch, 215 Granite Street. I feel like I can't vote with the knowledge that I need here. And if we have 91 private roads, as voters, we should all know who is hoping to make their roads public, and how, what is the actual process? Because quite honestly, not everybody has had the opportunity to get to know the town as well as Sarah. And I applaud her for going around and getting the neighbors all on board, but we actually, as voters, should know more about all the other roads and who's asking to go public. And, you know, it really feels like we just don't have the knowledge to vote on it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Finch. I don't know if anyone will address that further, but as I understand it, the residents we're talking about have taken the initiative to develop this. I don't know if others have or not. And right now, this is not at a stage where anything is being done definitively, other than to allowing the process to move forward. There may be somebody who can speak more informatively to that, but that's the understanding, at least from the discussion, from the chair's perspective. Any further discussion? All right. I think I said majority vote. This actually requires a 2/3s vote. The motion, the question before you is whether to appropriate $400,000 relating to improvements to Highview Road and Briny Way, as set forth on page 100 of the voters' booklet. It requires a 2/3s vote. If it's too close on the hands, I will go to the electronic voting. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. That carries by more than 2/3s. Before we get to the next motion, I want to extend a personal thank you to all of you who hung in through the end of the meeting, and also to those who've left recently. You are the happy few, maybe the unhappy few, but it is appreciated. You've done your town a good service, so thank you. We're done, right?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to dissolve?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say, "Let's go home."
Let's go.
All those opposed, quack like a duck.
Yeah.
That motion carries.